Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting this evening, Monday, May 11th, called "Meeting to Order." This meeting is being recorded for LCTV, is being aired live, and is also being livestreamed at longmeadow.org. If we can begin with the Fudge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe, caring, learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. We do not have a school presentation this evening, so we'll move directly to correspondence.
We have several pieces of correspondence. An emailed letter from Mr. Chris Papadopoulos dated April 14th, 2015. An emailed letter from Mr. Chris Papadopoulos dated April 28th, 2015. And both of those are regarding redistricting. An emailed letter from Mr. Chris Papadopoulos dated May 1st regarding the recommendation of redistricting subcommittee. An emailed letter from Ms. Tina DeMayo dated May 1st, 2015 regarding the vote of the redistricting subcommittee. A memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis of the Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center regarding the most improved vocational students in 2015. Long Meadow students honored are Ms. Ashley Naglieri Langlos, which, I'm sorry, I've mispronounced your name several times this year, but I think I got it this time, for early childhood education and care; Ms. Ashley Matthews for Graphic Communications 1; another memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis of the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center regarding outstanding vocational students in 2015; a memo dated May 4th, 2015 from Mr. Donald Jarvis of the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center regarding student of the month for April 25th, April 2015; Long Meadow students are Kevin Gonzalez for Informational Support Services and Networking 1; Colleen Donardo for Culinary 1; we had an emailed letter from Ms. Jen Cosgrove dated May 5th, 2015 regarding redistricting; an emailed letter from Ms. Teresa Carrington dated May 5th, 2015 regarding redistricting; and finally, an email letter from Ms. Kathy Nelson dated May 7th, 2015.
Thank you. I'll open it up at this time for visitor comments. With the number of people, I'd still like to remind everyone to try to keep it to a brief commentary.
My name is Kurt Friedman. As a member of the class of 1977, there's an issue I want to present to the community, which is of concern to me, and an issue that I'll be giving a presentation tomorrow night at the annual town meeting. The school committee should have concern for Article 23 at this year's town meeting that will call for an amendment to the bylaws that will change the way water and sewer rates are structured in Long Meadow. The end result, if this should somehow pass tomorrow night, is that water and sewer fees for all residents and commercial buildings in Long Meadow could increase very significantly. Based on my detailed evaluation, based on my detailed evaluation, the cost of water and sewer fees for Long Meadow schools could increase by 10% or more. Keep in mind, this was done without any notification to the schools. The analysis that was done by the Water and Sewer Task Force specifically did not address any commercial or non-residential buildings. I feel that this is a due process issue. The schools weren't notified, they couldn't have been notified, because they didn't do any analysis to tell you what your increases would be. I feel that the lack of notification and the displacement of due process is grossly unfair. The other item of concern is, the bylaw passes, thousands of residential customers will have their bills increase by 30% to 145% or more. People weren't notified by this, there was no advance disclosure of this information. I feel that the public discord as a result of these unfair water rates will affect the community's support of school projects, as many of those affected will feel betrayed by the town. To find out more, I posted a letter which appeared in the Long Meadow News, I don't know if anyone has seen that. My letter's also been published in the Long Meadow Buzz. So if you want to find out more about it, you can reference this link or pick up a Long Meadow News. In any event, please come to tomorrow night's meeting, Article 23, and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Hello? I realize the time sensitivity, so I wrote my statement down, I'm gonna read it, and Diane, I have a copy for you, so you don't have to worry about trying to keep up with typing. So I wanted to take this opportunity to share some thoughts before you make your final decision tonight. You know, I'm very disappointed in what's occurred today. Not only are we backed into a corner with Blueberry being overcrowded, we're now faced with making a decision based on a proposal that was formulated using a horribly flawed and non-transparent process. It's amazing how this concerning item is completely being overlooked because of the overcrowding emergency that appears to have suddenly come about. How could this have happened? Who's responsible for letting this overcrowding get to this point? And why isn't anyone taking accountability for this? Why is it okay to ignore these questions and sweep them under the rug, under the premise that there's an overcrowding emergency that needs action immediately? The proposed solution now is moving children in a thoughtless manner, which is why I and so many are upset. I'm shocked that the majority, referring to the seven yes-felt to the redistricting committee, seem just fine with moving children in a completely shoddy way. Redistricting or some other action needs to occur at Blueberry, there's no question about that, but whatever it is, needs to be done the right way from start to finish. If it was, we wouldn't have gone through what we just did the past several weeks, and the majority of the community would be accepting the situation and applauding the process. With that said, let me now walk through some of the areas of concern that we've been discussing over the past several weeks, both in these school committee meetings and letters I and others have written to the school and redistricting committee. Unclear budget, I simply can't see how any staff reductions will reduce, that will reduce the budget and keep class sizes the same or even close. How can any of this be accomplished with such uncertainty and lack of clarity? Before anything moves forward, this should be addressed and made clear to everyone on the school committee and to the public. Potential redistricting of middle schools next year, why wasn't all of this looked at together? Why would any of you want to go through this again? This could all be addressed through a proper, transparent, well-thought-out redistricting process using a third-party consultant to come up and provide recommendations to us. While the third-party consultant's compiling that data, the committee and subcommittee and/or subcommittee could be spending all the energy making an excellent transition plan that benefits both the teachers and, most importantly, the children. Any transition plan should start a year before redistricting actually happens in order to ensure success. MCAT scores, Stephanie Jasmine did a great job articulating the potential impact that redistricting could have in MCAT scores, and she spoke at the last school committee meeting. This also cannot be ignored, it's all tied together, I hope that you have given this consideration. Civil lawsuit, please get all the facts in this before we use it as a sole reason to redistrict our children so abruptly. It's clear that this soundbite is impactful for supporting the argument for redistricting now, but please get all the facts before doing a knee-jerk reaction to an unsubstantiated potential violation. It was even more concerning to me that the school committee just seemed to be hearing about this for the first time in the last meeting. Finally, safety. I'm concerned with a few items that I've heard about from a meeting that occurred on Friday, May 8th, with police, Chief Sierra No, Captain Stinkowitz, and Town Manager Mr. Crane, Alex Matreski, Elizabeth Tarian, and Superintendent Doyle regarding the crossing guard and safety of our children under Proposal A. Without getting into too much detail, Captain Stinkowitz stated that he has concerns with people turning from Route 5 to Converse and picking up speed and not seeing the crossing guard. He went on to say that he feels crossing is not safe, if crossing is not safe in this manner, then redistricting kids, redirecting kids along Laurel to Bliss and busing kids that are outside the two-mile radius would just have to do. It seems pretty clear that the police and town manager do not want children crossing Route 5 in Converse. They said they will have to see how the engineering studies will conclude, and this may not be done until August. This further adds to the fact that redistricting in Neighborhood A was not well-thought-out solution, and that many issues are still open. The most frustrating part of this is that these questions are raised in the redistricting committee meetings, as they should be. A few select individuals were trying to vet many unanswered questions such as this, as they should have, but only to be quickly dismissed by soundbites that quickly gained public backing without any public due diligence, except for a small subset of dedicated parents. In this case, the superintendent stated the police chief endorses Proposal A as the safest option. It seems every time some parents take time out of their busy lives sets the validity of statements and data that they've been provided, things just cannot be substantiated or backed up. The residents and taxpayers in this town should not have to look over anyone's shoulder that we've hired or elected in order to validate how things are being handled or managed. I'm honestly surprised that more people in this town are outraged by this. In closing, I just wanted to thank you all for your time and commitment to our community. Please know that the redistricting process that's occurred today is just one item of contention, just happens to be a big one. Don't think that your hard work and commitment to all the wonderful things that occur throughout our great school system are not recognized by me and the community. As mentioned above, no argument can be made that redistricting or something shouldn't happen. Because the problems at Blueberry need to be fixed, and that's your job, please understand that it's not about that, it's about how the process was conducted and presented to you for action. I urge you all to please do your own due diligence and take everything into account before you make any decision at all on redistricting the children of this town. Don't be afraid to think outside the box for a solution. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Russell Duperray, I live on Ashford Road, and I'm the third person running for the open two school committee spots. Originally, I decided to run for a variety of reasons. I have some young children in the school, I think community service is important, and as a school attorney, I thought I could provide a unique perspective. However, as I've become more involved in this process and going to meetings, I've determined that there's some serious concerns in regards to the manner in which decisions are being made, and also the lack of transparency. In Massachusetts, school systems are set up to ensure that checks and balances exist to prevent any one individual or entity from having too much control over decisions that are made in the school system. After attending several meetings, I've determined that I do not believe that the system of checks and balances is working in this particular town. Although redistricting is a type of decision that should be made by a school committee, I observe no evidence that the school committee made a decision to proceed with redistricting or, in the alternative, made a decision to ask the superintendent to proceed with redistricting. This type of decision is important to our children and to our community, and should have been discussed by the committee prior to commencing the process. The open meeting law requires that most school committee decisions be made in public. The requirement is crucial to the successful operation of a school system and ensures that the public knows what decisions are being made on its behalf. Without the transparent and open process that the law requires, the public does not know whether the officials that is elected are making decisions that they support. As we learned in a public hearing, the school budget included redistricting. However, the committee did not vote in a public meeting to proceed with redistricting. Therefore, the public was unaware that when the budget was voted, redistricting was also effectively approved on that night. At the last committee meeting I attended, in response to a citizen inquiry, it was admitted that the redistricting of the middle school will also be discussed next year. It also appeared that this type, this issue is part of a long-term plan. And while I applaud long-term thinking and planning, this type of planning needs to be done in an open meeting so that we all know what's going on. I also believe that the statements of interest in regard to the middle school were not done in a transparent manner. The Board of Selectmen requested input from the community regarding the SOIs, and as a citizen, I found it very difficult to try and provide that input because I had a very minimal amount of information to do so. There was really no information regarding the costs, positives and negatives, and the long-term impacts of the projects. In addition, it was not clear, I think, to anyone whether the committee favored repair of the existing two buildings or a new building to replace the current two. In regard to a decision such as this, it should be clear in advance which approach the committee favors and why you favor that approach. In order to present a project like that, or SOIs, to the Board of Selectmen without being clear to them what you actually favor, I think it makes it very hard for a Board of Selectmen to actually vote in the affirmative to move forward with the project. I implore the committee and the administration to let the community know what is planned for our school system and our community and children. Ultimately, I understand the need to make tough decisions regarding redistricting and the middle school building projects, Bull Day kindergarten, and all the things that have been before you in the recent past. And I do not fault you or the administration for attempting to make these changes. Many changes such as these need to be made. However, these decisions are important, they directly affect our children and community, and we as citizens deserve to know what is happening in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Aaron Mathor, 101 Converse Street. I tend to be here pretty regularly now, but in the interest of time, I've prepared a statement. This is more or less what's sort of on my plate. Given where we are today, the first, first item is that I'm really in disbelief that the first meaningful meeting regarding safety was held this past Friday. It was one of the very first issues raised in the evaluation of the redistricting proposals, and it was quickly dismissed. There was a misleading statement in the communication to the public. And, you know, this is really a disservice to all the parents and even the school committee members who are working hard to uncover the facts and arrive at a good solution to the problem. And if you recall, I urged the committee many weeks ago to, you know, vet everything that's coming from the superintendent's desk for this very reason. While we're on the topic of safety, I know it hasn't been mentioned, but I understand that there's some talk of putting crossing guards at Llewellyn Street, and I just wanted to touch on that for a moment, because one of the problems with this crossing is that it's not a formal intersection, where cars are accustomed to slow down in anticipation of approaching traffic lights. Llewellyn is right smack in the middle of Laurel and Long Meadow Street, where cars are reaching their maximum speed after traveling through the intersection at Laurel or turning east on a Converse from Route 5, and I can see this right from my own house. I'm sure Captain Stankowitz will conduct a necessary analysis, but I wouldn't be surprised if we had to do more than add a couple crossing guards to establish a safe sight distance considering the speed of the vehicles. And this is important for the safety of our children, as well as the safety of our crossing guards. I won't begin to discuss the traffic implications of all this, but it seems that it will take some more months to fully understand the safety and traffic implications of walking routes to center school. Safe walking routes are not the only missing details in Plan A. We still haven't heard what long-term solution will be implemented that prevents us from being back here in the same place in the next five years. Many families have been led to believe that their children with special needs, for example, will be allowed to stay at Blueberry, but this hasn't been clarified for the public. It's also unclear if our teachers' union will be able to support the transitioning tasks that will likely be required through the summer, or that will be able to meet the staffing requirements at either school to maintain acceptable class sizes. With the devil still in many of these details, my fear is that Plan A is at risk of falling apart. Then what? Do we push forward and muck it up for our kids? Take a look at Mrs. Grazinski's Hail Mary Plan, published in the Reminder recently. It employs modular space at the cost of 1/10th of 1% of our budget and buys us more time to rebalance our schools. That's not a long shot, that's a safe bet. To close, I want to point out that it is only by some derivative of Robert's rules that you, the committee, are here this evening voting on redistricting. The fact is that a majority of the redistricting committee, committee members did not recommend Plan A. The majority either abstained or voted against it. For all of you, I fully understand the burden to act, to vote in favor of equity in education. But voting "no" this evening doesn't mean we can't address the current disparity in enrollment, it just means you believe there's a better way. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Loma, and I live at 123 Edgewood Avenue. I am not at all impacted by the redistricting process. As a matter of fact, I don't have any children in the school system yet. However, my husband and I are expecting our first child to be born in August, and we decided to move to Long Meadow and make Long Meadow our home as a place where we wanted to raise a family, because of the community and the great reputation of the school system. In the past few months, it's been hard to avoid the redistricting talks, the articles in the paper, hearing from friends around town who are in several of the, were in several of the impacted districts. I've watched most of the meetings, the ones that have been televised, and one thing that has been pretty clear to me the entire time is the lack of a fair and honest process and transparency. In fact, I understand that the redistricting information online and the LCTV televised broadcasting was only made available after some parents in the impacted districts complained. As a school committee, members whom we have put our trust in and voted in office, we expect that you have the best interest of all children before anything else. It has been disappointing to see that some members of the committee appear to be blindly following an agenda. The school committee is voted in by the taxpayers and the people who live in this town and who care a great deal about living in such a great community, in such a great school system. I highly encourage you to take pause and stop the current redistricting process now. I urge you to start a fresh process that would include extensive and detailed analysis, including hiring an independent third party that specializes in this work. Most importantly, I implore you to listen to the voice of the taxpayers, who spoke loud and clear at the public forum. The common messages in the forum were the community did not like Option E, they wanted a pause in the process, and more detailed analysis. Over 200-plus taxpayers spoke for the grandfathering in of all children and their families. Option E has been voted down, and it is now time to listen to the other voices. Please, I urge you again to listen to these comments tonight and take these into consideration during the vote, and thank you for your consideration.
Any other comments?
Hi, my name's Janet Queen Noack. I'm at 104 South Park Ave., and I have been impacted by the redistricting, I'm in Neighborhood Plan A. I'd like to just kind of, I have many things to say, but I think I'll try and just keep it short, and I'll just read from what I've written. "We are a community filled with well-educated people who have the capacity and resources to collaboratively problem-solve and come up with creative and long-term solutions to the redistricting problem. Yet we keep going back to redistricting, a process that is exhausting, complex, and painful. Why force redistricting again and rush into a failed solution to a problem? We have proved that the pendulum will swing yet again in the next five to 10 years. Center will be overcrowded, redistricting will rear its ugly head once again. More pain for our community, children, and families. Are we really expecting a different outcome this time? Long Meadow can do better than this. Long Meadow prides itself in being a child-friendly community where education, safety, and quality of life for our children takes precedence over many things. This child-centered philosophy is the only, is the overlay of this town. Yet today, as a community, we are asking 70 children to make a sacrifice for others, enforcing them to leave the school that they love. This has potential to negatively impact these children both emotionally and academically. Their safety may be compromised, too, as they will be biking along and across the most dangerous and trafficked streets and intersections in the town. Long Meadow can do better than this. As our superintendent has stated herself, redistricting is a painful process, and indeed so painful of a process that there was an avoidance of it which ultimately, along with a series of other events, has made it flawed and unethical. And a large group of very hard-working, loving parents in the Plan A neighborhood have not been given due process, and there has been no due diligence. And because of this unethical process, it will never feel right for many of us to send our children to center school. I invite members of the school committee to ask themselves this question: Can I, in good faith, vote to allow for redistricting to happen as it is presently proposed? Please vote to pause redistricting so that we can do it right, or at the very least, grandfather all children while implementing very reasonable alternatives to address the space issues. And as it stands right now, we are, with the fifth graders being grandfathered in, some of us will be split between two elementary schools, which is just, I think, unacceptable. I know that many people in our community were very upset about, you know, not having their neighborhoods being split, and now we're asking families to be split. Today, as a community, we have the opportunity to do things differently and demonstrate to other towns and cities, both locally and across the nation, that there are better, more intelligent, and humane ways to redistrict. Long Meadow can be the pioneers in this mission. I have full confidence in our ability to make redistricting as we know it, a thing of the past. Please, I urge you to consider all of these factors as you cast your vote tonight." Please, I urge you to consider all of these factors as you cast your vote tonight. So I do ask that the school committee members ask themselves this question: Can I, in good faith, vote to allow for redistricting to happen as it is presently proposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Teresa Carrington, 27 Fernleaf Ave. I'm here on behalf of my son, Jack, who's a rising fourth grader, he's in Blueberry Hill. I'm not going to read all the letters I've written, I'm just going to summarize them. I've sent three letters out to the committee about my concerns. The first one is about the grandfathering issue, and I think that any plan should have supported that. If you had grandfathering, redistricting would be a lot -- it would actually be painless. So dismissing that doesn't take into consideration problems such as myself, my child being in school for four years at his loved school and having to move to Center. And we originally wanted to be in Center School, and so you would think, oh, this isn't an issue. But it's -- I asked my son, what does he want? He loves his school, he doesn't want to move, he loves his teachers. I even mentioned about, you're not going to have the same teacher next year, what is that, you know, can -- you're going to have to have a new teacher. He's like, it's not just Ms. Higgins, it's everyone in the school, it's the whole community. He loves it. So that issue, I think, should be taken into consideration in any plan that you move forward with, is planning it out so you can let people stay where they are. Just like the person that just spoke, Janet, before me, I can't imagine being a parent that has to go to two schools every morning, that's chaos, so I'm very concerned about that. The second thing that I wanted to bring up was, after the presentation at the end of April that was presented to the school committee, I found out that not only is my son being asked to move to Center, but his classroom is overcrowded, that there's only three classrooms for fourth grade and Center. And I thought about, how about those Center parents, aren't they going to be concerned about that? Aren't the kids going to be not as welcoming when they're in an overcrowded situation at Center with new kids moving in and not getting as much attention as they're used to? I just thought about all those concerns, and I'm worried about that. And then the third thing was the one that just happened with the chief of police and the safety meeting. That one really upset me, because I thought that was all figured out, and it's not, and my son would have to go right now, I guess the chief of police is saying that crossing at Converse is a no-no, it's too dangerous, because there's going to be the I-91 construction starting in the fall, and MGM starting in the fall. Then all those commuters are going to be very angry that they're all backed up and not getting to work. And I'm afraid about aggression and all of that stress that can happen in the morning, and my kid being in the way, which I don't like. So I was very concerned, because then I found out, hey, they're going to move it to reroute them to Laurel. And I go, that's over two miles away. So I moved to this town so my kid can bike to school, to his neighborhood school, and now I'm being told, oh, I might have to have him on a bus? So that's upsetting. So then I also went through the route, and I've been taking my son to Center to get him acclimated, actually to go play on the playground after, on the weekends. And we -- I've counted the streets, and I've seen how many intersections there are. There are three very dangerous intersections that he would have to cross, and there's a total of 13 cross streets. And most of them are cut-throughs. Everybody's going to 91, so they're all cutting through. And as the traffic gets to be an issue, that's going to be a lot more stress added to our infrastructure as a town. So I'm very worried about that. So when I was counting all the streets, I realized, right now, he crosses one, just one, Converse and Laurel. And there's a crossing guard there, people expect to stop there, that's the only one he has to deal with. Then there's only one other crossing guard at, what's the name of it? Hold on one second.
Burbank.
Burbank, thank you. So there's only one other one at Burbank, and that one is actually not crazy-traveled, so it's not that bad. That's it. He pretty much goes around the park and gets to school with no issues, I don't have to stress out about him getting hit by a car. So with this new plan, I'm a little scared about that. And I don't know how that can be prevented. And I understand the idea about the going through Llewellyn, but if there's not a crossing guard with a button to press, what if he stays after school? How is he going to get home? He has to go two miles out of his way to get home, so that's another issue I have. Because if you're saying he can't cross at Converse, and there's no real crossing guard and lights at Llewellyn, where is he going to have to cross? So those are my issues that I wanted just to summarize today. And I thank you, I know this is a terrible process that you've been going through, but I really just want you to think about it if it's your own kid. And I know this town, when Plan E and all these other plans came in, and it was their child, they were really concerned. So you have to realize, we're all one town, and we each can be affected by things, such as the middle school being redistricted, and it's all going to come back up. So to find a process such as grandfathering that will help the citizens that are currently in the town schools be happy, I think, would help the situation out a lot. So thank you, and please consider delaying the process a little bit and coming up with a better plan for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I do have some handouts, is it better to hand them out now or during the discussion?
One to the committee?
Yes.
You can give them to Diana, she can pass them down.
Promise to listen to me and not look at the charts. Good evening, everyone, Alex Mitreska, 68 Ellington Street. I wanted to first start off by just really saying thank you for all the work that you do on this committee. I know it's not easy, I know it's very time-consuming, you spend time reading a lot of material, and then you have to be here every other Monday, you have to deal with parents with issues, some of them are good. And throughout this process, not for a single moment, I haven't thought that you don't have the children's interest as the number-one priority. I think that's the reason why you've signed up here, is to make a difference, and actually to make a positive difference. And you do, in many aspects of it, you do. And I think that sometimes gets forgotten. And at the same time, you do have the community at large as the priority. There is always going to be somebody who may be unhappy, I serve with certain boards, and you have to make certain decisions, like the one tonight, and there will be people that will not be happy. But, you know, at the same time, I look at you as the board of directors of a $37 million enterprise. I mean, that's the budget that the school has, and you have to not look at the day-to-day activities, but be able to oversee, ask the questions, make sure that this enterprise is going in the right direction and the right steps are taken. And I think the superintendent has the staff to do the day-to-day activities, but asking the right questions, proposing solutions, that's sort of the essential piece of this school committee. So when this redistricting happened, and I think the idea was there, that the school committee would be sort of be kept informed, what everything happens, as we've been informed behind the scenes, where it kicked off in October, through three school committee members were part of that process, the idea was great, that it's going to be that sort of oversight on a challenging, as Superintendent Doyle has indicated, a challenging and difficult topic is redistricting. You have to know certain things, you have to be part of the process, even behind the scenes, even not informing the public, you still need to make sure that safety, budgets, allocation of teachers, those are important pieces, that I think those are within the realm of your jobs and responsibilities. But I think that process has sort of failed, because from what I've discovered over this long period of time, is that there was one meeting in October with those three school committee members, and those three school committee members never, ever met again. So there was no oversight. There were some school committee members who were in the loop of what was happening, but there was no discussion that you have the right information to make the decision. And then the first sort of healthy discussion on redistricting as part of this school committee happened two weeks ago, when you guys started talking about headcount, how our classes are going to go up. That's the type of discussion, because this is a difficult decision, you want to make sure that you're making the right decision. It's impossible to take it back. So having the right questions and knowing that understanding, I think, is important. I will briefly touch on safety, I don't know if you had a chance to look at my email this afternoon, I tried to provide some information where things happen, on what happened on Friday. I do want to point out that I raised safety as an issue on April 1st, on our second redistricting committee, knowing that I've lived in that neighborhood. Actually, I lived on corner of Converse and Llewellyn, so I know that area very well and that intersection. It's a dangerous intersection, it's a busy intersection. And that meeting, which is enlightening, was that there were three professionals who really didn't have part of this political process. They were professionals, the town manager, the police chief, they have safety in mind and best interest of the town. So what I came out of that meeting was that there will be, there are engineering studies being performed, how that intersection will be solved and addressed as part of the casino mitigation effort, and those studies will not be completed till August. In addition, the police chief said specifically, whatever kid passes there, there'll be 30-second delay, that's going to cause incredible traffic jam in that intersection, and also you heard what Captain Stankovitz said. So I think, at the end of that meeting, what was very clear was, thank you for your input, we will have to look at these in greater detail, because this is the first time we're talking about this issue. So then when I talked to Superintendent Doyle an hour later, my understanding is that the solution was solved, everything was solved, and there will be two guards at Route 5 and Converse and Llewellyn. So to me, that was confusing, because I thought they had to go through a transportation committee to discuss, and you can clarify this after this, but that was my understanding, that the studies will not be completed this summer, and they have to look at a transportation committee. So safety is paramount in this solution, so I want to point something out to you that you may not know. A crossing guard was ran over and killed a few months ago in West Springfield. You have to take that into consideration, so I have the actual news story here for you to see what happens. I invite every one of you to go on that intersection in the morning and see what happens. I go there, out of town, very many people try to get out of town, trying to get the last person on the red light before it closes, it's a very busy intersection at 8:00, and now we're adding children to the mix. So you have to understand, and I don't know if you feel comfortable voting for this, knowing the safety implications there. So please read the article, understand what you have in mind. So then, a couple of highlight points, classes in Blueberry are going to go up, class sizes in Center will go up, teachers will have to be added to Center to keep classes down, which then adds cost to redistricting. So you add a teacher, you add additional crossing guards, that is twice the cost that Ms. Grozinski has proposed in her proposal. So you actually will be saving money if you do not redistrict instead of redistricting, so that needs to be put into perspective. Now, I want to like redistricting, I do. I honestly have thought about it, I've done a lot of soul-searching and figuring out, maybe it's better for me. Especially now with middle school redistricting coming into play, and knowing that some of my daughter's friends that are currently in Blueberry may go to Glenbrook, that I'm sort of fighting to keep that friendship alive, well, they may go to Glenbrook. So maybe perhaps it's in best interest of me for my children to go to Center and build up the friendship, so they won't do end up in Williams, they will have a lot more friends pool than they would have under the middle school redistricting. But I don't have that information now, so that's very difficult and challenging for me to make that informative decision. Now, what you have in front of you is two charts that I think you need to look at it and hopefully discuss later on in the session. So in my mind, I said, what happens? This all happened last night, so I apologize for not sending you this in advance, spent, stayed late, and pulled up the data, because there was a lot of discussion on MCAS. I said, what happened 12 years ago when the last redistricting happened? And the information in the charts are staggering. So if you look, Blueberry, at the time, at 2002, 2003, was ranked 32nd in the state. Soon as the redistricting happened, it went down to 134th, and then to 182nd in ranking. So at the same time, Center went down. So to me, there is a very clear correlation of students coming in and not, and scores going down. Now, we have great teachers, I have no doubt about that, but there is the added load. There's 65 to 80 children that are being added there, and this is sort of the second big issue of this. Are you, as a committee, fully aware of what are the staffing additions to Center to accommodate for 80 children? Not just the teacher at that class, but helping? Matt, Matt, reading specialist, those are important pieces that I don't have that information, and we've been asking for that information. Now, so this cannot be overlooked, in terms of what happened 10 years ago, so we cannot repeat that same mistake again. Now, look what's happened recently. The other thing, by the way, just to mention, is that these charts intertwine, which further indicates what we've been saying all along, that Center and Blueberry are both great schools. One year is one is better, next time, another one is better. So I want to make that very clear, that they're both great schools. But unfortunately, the numbers in Center have gone downhill in terms of MCAS in the last two years. Not downhill, but they've just gotten a little bit worse. So what happens is, in two years, Center has gone from 113-ranked to 209 to 241. And this is right on the eve of redistricting. And if I look at that chart, and another 150 drop in two years that happened in Blueberry 12 years ago, and I look at where Center is in 240, this is a significant trade-off. We cannot sort of create space in Blueberry at a trade-off of detriment of education of students and scores in Center School. Ms. Sutton does not deserve that, and the staff there does not deserve that. And I don't know if you have gone through the budget and ensured that the training there is there, for the teachers, for the staff, to be able to accommodate that. And, you know, this weekend, I was reading this book, it's actually called What Teachers Make, and I don't know if Mr. Fitzgerald, you've read it, it's a very famous book for a lot of teachers. It talks about a teacher who's been at a dinner party, and somebody sort of starts to make fun of him, that he doesn't make much in terms of financially, and he doesn't make a difference in the world, and the teacher goes home that night and writes a poem, very famous poem, and then writes the book itself. And what struck me is that teachers are the most important, essential piece to our society. They create and shape how this country moves forward. They are the foundation. What happens 10 years from now? What happens to this community? I've looked at the scores last night, this school, this district is great. But some of these issues are very important, and we have to give teachers the assistance they need. And I hate to bring this up, but in four years, we've had four assistant superintendents. Four assistant superintendents in four years. Principal in Glenbrook has left. Ms. Pratt tried to apply for a different job after 25 years here. Principal in Williams is retiring, early or not questionable. There's two assistant superintendents in Blueberry that have retired. So my fear is that the teachers who make a difference do not have the right leadership and the right support to make this district great, and our children and our community deserve better. So hopefully you will consider that. Safety is a big issue, teachers, they need the support so that this school continues to grow, do well. And I look at it and say, my wife and I are in our 30s, if we decide to have our third child, which one of you can tell me that I'm not going to be here in seven years and argue again on these same very issues? I don't want to do it. I don't, I want to be a coach, I want to soccer coach, that's all I want to be involved in this community, and fundraise for Lea. But that's the issue here, is that there's been a big fundamental problem with how this has been done. Let's create the space, let's do it. It seems like a solution, but it could be a significant error to this community that will have long-term consequences. So I hope you consider that as you make your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Janet, for letting me speak a little bit over.
No problem. Any other comments?
Is this good?
You're fine.
Okay. All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Kathy Nelson. I live at 62 Converse Street, and I'm actually here to offer a little bit of a different perspective from what you've been hearing. I'm a parent in town who was on the last redistricting committee, so I feel everybody's pain that was, that served on it. I feel the pain of you folks having to make this decision, and I thank you all. It's such a contentious issue, redistricting. It was very difficult 12, 13 years ago, and I can feel the emotion and the passion in this room of parents who love their children and don't want them to leave their elementary school. We felt the same way about Center. We did not want to leave Center. I'm from neighborhood A, you're Plan A. Over 100 children 12 years ago moved from Center to Blueberry. And it was a painful process doing the redistricting, but I'm here to tell you that the difficult part was the months leading up to the decision that was made. Once the school committee made the decision, things settled down. Now, our committee was set up a little different. There were not 25, 26 people. We had, I believe, nine. We had two members of the school committee, two from each school, and we had the superintendent. So it was a little bit of a different process, but leading into the vote, we were unanimous. Our committee was unanimous in the decision we made, we made the decision based on data. We had, I believe, nine. We had two members of the school committee, two from each school, and we had the superintendent. So, it was, it was a little bit of a different process. But leading into the vote, we were unanimous. Our committee was unanimous in the decision we made. We made the decision based on data. Data drove it. I lived at 62 Converse Street. There was no way to deny the data. Our neighborhood needed to move. There were over 100 students that left Center and went to Blueberry. My son's second-grade class created a new 25-student class at Blueberry. 25, because, by the way, back then, you, parents are very lucky nowadays, that you have an administration that is keeping your class sizes to, I believe it was 17 to 22, which occasionally, there were 23. That did not used to be the case. And that has a lot to do with why this redistricting, I believe, is happening. Because I was surprised at first to hear that of 501 students, we were looking to redistrict. My first response was, we've been that way for the last 12 years, what's different now? So, I did my due diligence, and I looked into it, and what did I see? I saw technology teachers, I saw new programs, I saw early interventions, I saw reading coaches. I saw all sorts of great things, that were actually improving our educational system, which is fantastic. My older three children did not benefit from this. So, I'm just here to offer the perspective that the kids did fine. The safety concerns that I'm hearing tonight about those kids going down Long Meadow Street were the same concerns I heard about them crossing Laurel. Nobody wanted their child to cross Laurel Street, because that was the dangerous intersection at that time. Well, of course, the kids did fine. And I'm sure that the, you know, our police department will do due diligence in directing these children safely down Converse Street. I have to, you know, assume that they will. Change is very, very difficult, but I think that what's really difficult is the uncertainty and the anxiety that we're providing, that we're modeling for our children. And I just want to offer that perspective. The kids did fine. I would have heard if they didn't, because I heard for months leading up to it, all the concerns that parents had. I was very good friends with most of the families in the neighborhood, still, you know, I'm still good friends with them now, and everybody really did okay. So, I think that's all I need to say. And I do want to thank you all for your service. I know it goes unthanked often, but we do thank you. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Seeing none, I'll ask for school committee comments at this time. I would say that if you have comments about redistricting, perhaps, we can hold those until there's a motion made, and we can have it during our discussion. Were there any other comments that anybody needed, needing to make? Liz?
I just want to say, I went to the APR show last week, and I was so impressed by all the artwork, and I wish I had money with me, because I would have bought a lot of stuff. But I have their business cards, and so I can go on their websites and make some purchases soon. So, that's definitely something that everyone should go take a look at at some point.
Awesome. Thank you. John?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on Mr. Friedman's claim that the water rates are gonna be outrageously high. I believe that the proposal is basically a conservation measure, designed to effectively begin to ration water use in Long Meadow. We're one of the highest users of water. We got a lot of dirty laundry, or whatever, we have to get rid of here, but there is a very high water use that I think the fee schedule is designed to reduce. And I was just gonna ask him about that, but that's all I'll say.
Tomorrow night.
See him tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll add, I think that I kind of speak for this whole committee when I say that today was a very trying day, with regard to our missing student from Wolf Swamp. But I think that it goes without saying that, you know, our police chief, our Captain Stankiewicz, the superintendent, Neil Guile, you know, this entire town did such an amazing job of banding together and making this such a, you know, visible, vocal, loud, you know, experience. You know, I think we're all just so thankful for his safe return, and that he was safe. And I think that today, the community really showed its true colors, and, you know, and how it banded together to help find him. And Neil sent out an email to the Wolf Swamp community earlier today, outlining how he's gonna be talking to students tomorrow. And I really appreciate that, because, you know, this is an emotional issue, and it is, it was a very scary day, I think, for, you know, the seven of us who found out at about 11:00, when you found out. And I know that the rest of the community shared in that. So, I'm happy to see that he's home safe.
Anyone? Michelle?
Yeah, I also want to comment, I saw how, at least at Blueberry, they handled a dismissal under these circumstances, and it was just, it was a great showing of emergency procedures, and everyone stepping forward to make sure that all the children left the school safe. So, Ms. Pratt, thank you for doing that. I felt very comfortable watching the kids all exit the school, and I'm sure the other principals did the same, so thank you. And I also just wanted to give a compliment to the teachers from Blueberry. I have three teachers at Blueberry, and my first grader came home with an amazing biography of me for Mother's Day. And, you know, looking at this, as a mom, it was beautiful, but also, as a teacher, somehow, she used our standards and, you know, had a graphic organizer with details, and the kids were investigating the information in this. So, you know, under all of our testing and standards that we have, she found a way to kind of creatively create something beautiful out of it. So, and with third grade, the same thing. Here's a, it really is like an open response to an MCAS, but it's a Mother's, Happy Mother's Day card to me, and it's an essay with supporting details, and it would have been a four on the rubric of an MCAS test, and I just had to look at it from both ways. But the information in it was so beautiful, and so I'd like to compliment them. And then, the fifth grade, actually, she told them to be independent and to create their own gift for their mother, and I think that's appropriate for fifth grade, to foster independence and to go out and get your own gift, which my son did, thanks to that. So, anyhow, it made my Mother's Day, so thank you. And then, in relation to the safety issue today, I do hope that we can expedite a system. I know we've talked about it already, but I think this was a really big scare to all of us, and I think we should work quickly to adopt a different type of alert system that we, you know, using the technology that we have. I know we've discussed using Alert Now, or the messaging computerized system, they take attendance. Can we, as a committee, can you, Marie, support making that happen very quickly?
Absolutely. I've already contacted Kevin Moranda. With the upgrade, with the broadband and some of the new systems in place, we can do it. So, we'll be putting that into effect as soon as possible. I think what Michelle's asking for is automated calls when your child is absent, because the procedure now is the attendance goes to the office, and somebody makes the call individually, and it takes time to go through the list. With an automated call, everybody would know within a matter of minutes who's absent. So, we will definitely be moving forward with that.
Do you have any idea how long it would take?
I don't. Kevin was offsite today, but I will follow up with that first thing tomorrow.
Okay. And then, update us, just so we can feel a little bit more relaxed as a committee?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I would just echo with regard to that. At the last meeting, we voted on a policy that would, you know, that essentially asks staff to work as quickly as possible to identify that, which I know you don't help draft, so now, it's just implemented now.
I know that during our retreat, in November, when we went to the school committee conference, there was a company there that, basically, they created an app that every teacher has on their device in their room, whether it's an iPad, or iPhone, or whatever they have. And within seconds, you know, by 9:00 AM, the teacher has already taken attendance. Because I know right now, like, I know, I know that a parent emailed you today, Marie, and I know that she's talked to us last year as well, about how late she had been notified when she didn't call her, her, when her son, she didn't call in until the school, her son was sick, and they called her around 10:30. And if he didn't make it to school, that was, that would be too late. So, I just, I do want to reiterate the speediness, hopefully, finding a new solution.
I will deal with this immediately. I think today's scare was enough for all of us. When this came up previously, we did not have the capacity to do it between broadband and programs, but we do now, so we will put this in place as soon as possible. And I'll talk to Kevin tomorrow morning and let you know what he says in the timeframe.
I have other things that I want to talk about besides redistricting.
Rock on.
Not that, I, I just want to follow up. I know on a couple of things with Steel. I know that Mark has sent out a request to the tech people to have some updates made to our website. So, thank you, Mark, for your quick attention. I just sent that this afternoon. Kind of, some of the things I was gonna say was that, you know, I, I know we had some issues, and a parent notifying us that they hadn't heard much from Steel this year. I know the second we got the email from the town resident, Marie checked in with Mark, and they've had another meeting since, and things seem to be happening. I just want to make sure we don't let them go dormant again.
We've already scheduled another meeting?
I saw that in June.
Yeah. And we'll have, in June, we will schedule out for next year, so that we are more proactive in that, too.
Right. I just, I feel a little bit, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I think...
Embarrassed, almost said a resident had to bring it to our attention that it was going for so long. And I just want to make sure we have something in place, that that's not gonna happen again. That, along with the, I don't know if the email is even correct, about the information that's on the website. I want to make sure that that information that she emailed about is correct.
It's already been corrected.
Okay. But I guess I don't want to have to have a resident in town have to tell us that it's incorrect. I want us, as a district, to know that it's incorrect and have it correct on there, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So, I just want to make sure, whoever's supposed to oversee that in the district is overseeing it, and we're not gonna get called out again on something we're not doing correctly with that, I guess, is my request. Because I, you know, twice, my resident in town just doesn't make me feel...
Yeah. I agree. I think that we need to do a better job in making sure that the meetings are happening on a regular basis, and that the information about special ed is accurate.
So, I just, you know, we're, we're on it?
We're on it.
And we're gonna make...
We're having weekly meetings.
Efforts to...
On reviewing all information.
Okay.
I would say that this meeting was really well-attended, and it was, I feel like, very productive meeting, too. So, I think that it was just sort of pushing the right direction.
Okay. Let's see. And then, I had a question about how the committees are formed for things like the principal search. I got an email from a parent, once the email went out about the Williams principal search, and the list of people that are on it. She wondered how the parents were picked. I know that how, I know how the school committee person was picked, because we were all here that day. But this parent expressed some concern that she feels like the same parents are getting picked, like she, for the special programs committee, there was an email that went out to the community that said, we are forming this committee, let me know if you're interested. She wondered if she missed an email?
No.
That went out?
For search committees, we ask the principals to give recommendations, because we're limited on the number of seats, but that's certainly something we can look at if people feel like they'd like more options. But it's always been done that the principal gives us referrals for teachers to sit on the committees, as well as parents. And they usually pick parents that are involved with PTO, school council, things like that. Very often, you'll see school leaders that are on those committees. Do you have a suggestion for a better way to do that?
I guess, maybe, for a conscious of not picking the same parents all the time? Or, next?
Yeah, or if I could, you know...
Because you were CC, but took the same pair. Yeah. And I think, perhaps, if the principals are making recommendations, they could engage the community, the school population, and just say, I'm looking for volunteers, please let me know if you're interested. And then, if they want to make that decision, at least, they've asked who's interested, and in some way, involved everybody that would be.
Okay. I'll think more about that, but I'm wondering, too, if there's something that could just say, committees will come up during the year, would you be interested in doing that, and having a running list of people, so that we can vary that?
Maybe that's...
We could also send out each time a search committee is formed, a large one. A principal search committee is important.
Right.
So, you could see inviting people to sit on that.
Or even the student council. You know, they were elected to represent the school if they were invited to join in. I think one person was disappointed that they weren't, and they were a student council rep, so...
We thought about that. It was two full days out of school, plus visits. It could have been taking them out of the classroom for four or five days.
Parent.
Oh, school council.
Exactly. Sorry.
I'm sorry, not student council.
School council, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, what else? You already talked about the safety. So, then, the next thing I was gonna ask was, Jeff Klotz has mentioned some things, time and time again, it seems, at least in the last two years that I've been on the school committee. And recently, I saw another quote of his. And I'm thinking that maybe, while you have a larger audience than we typically have, not just the audience here, but the ones that are watching, you could maybe clear it up and tell us exactly... He says, during my tenure on the town's audit committee, in each of the past two years, we have reported on financial transgressions committed by either the school administration or their charges.
Sure. Tom, I'll defer to you on this one. It had to do with ticket receipts.
And just...
Gate receipts for the athletics.
Correct. He seems to bring this up every moment he can get in front of a microphone. He brought it up during the public forum about redistricting. He brought it up last year during one of our meetings, and he's brought it up on Facebook and various forums. So, I thought we could have some clarity.
So, back in the audit of the fiscal year 2013, there was a finding in the timeliness of gate receipts being turned over to the town, in that there needed to be a stronger reconciliation of those receipts, to ensure that the money that was actually being collected was actually moving it into the town treasurer's office. It was brought to our attention, I would say, in early December. We issued a memo immediately changing procedures, and transferred all of the gate, the tickets for athletic events to the business office, out of the athletic director's office. At the same time, there is also a vacancy in the faculty manager's position for that entire year, who oversees the gate receipts and the deposits of those receipts, which then, in turn, fell back onto the athletic director, who, with all the things he had going on, kind of let it fall to the bottom of his priority list. So, they were, it was kept up in the safe in the high school. There were no irregularities cited in the audit, besides the fact that they weren't turned over in a timely manner. The other piece that Mr. Klotz has asked about in the past is compliance of budget transfers that the school department has. The school committee has a policy that stipulates authorization levels, in terms of when the school committee has to authorize it, or the superintendent has to authorize it, or it can be approved at the business office level. We gave him three years' worth of budget transfers. This was back in February of this year. I have not heard back from him again regarding that information. I don't know if the superintendent has. But those are the two issues that I believe he's referring to. So, not exactly sure what questions he may have. I did tell him if he needed information about the transfers, to, don't hesitate to contact, may be happy to sit down and go through them with him. But he never took me up on that offer, so I don't know if there's still additional questions he might have or not.
Can I follow up on that as well? Because it should also be mentioned that last Wednesday night, the audit committee, in their yearly exercise, once again, charged that the school committee is not in compliance with the charter, which they've done every year, was on their agenda. And their main contention, and I think this is important for the entire school community here, is that we are out of compliance with the charter in Section 6-2, which provides that there shall be a Department of Finance and Administration for the Fiscal Affairs of the Town, and the coordination and overall supervision of the business, fiscal, and financial activities of all town agencies, including the school department. Which, essentially, the accusation is that we're not acting in compliance with the charter, because according to the charter, there should be one office of finance and administration, and it should remain on the town side. That is in the charter. However, the Massachusetts General Law speaks a little differently. And this is taken from a letter I sent to him last February, I believe, when I was chair. And I let him know that the, I said, that I'd like to inform the audit committee of the school department's statutory protection from such action. Massachusetts General Law provides school committees with special authority over their finances and policy, to ensure that the best interests of students is not eroded by dubious attempts by underfunding or reprioritization of education. The school committee's statutory authority is established and defined under Massachusetts General Law, section, or 34B and 71, chapters 34B and 71, respectively. The town of Long Meadow and the Long Meadow Public Schools have a legal obligation to act with all respect to Massachusetts General Law. Currently, the town of Long Meadow and the Long Meadow Public Schools are acting in compliance with MGL Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven M, which states that in order for the consolidation described in the Home Rule Charter to occur, that such consolidation may only occur upon the majority of vote of both the school committee and the annual town meeting. That is a check and balance in the law to protect schools and public schools from attempts by municipal governments and general governments to underfund them or to defer funding from municipalities. So should town meeting decide that one day that they would like to consolidate, it still requires a vote of this committee. And so we are acting in compliance with Massachusetts General Laws. That section of the MGL, or that section of the charter, I should say, allows us to consolidate. But it is no, by no means a directive to consolidate according to the law. So I let him know that. But again, they discussed it last year, or again, Wednesday night because, you know, they don't believe us.
Yes.
So, it's fine.
So Mass Law supersedes the charter, is that correct?
Yes. So it's an option, but, you know, it's not an option that I'm supportive of.
Thank you.
I want to put that out there.
Thank you for the clarification. I just, you know, I just feel like we've said it enough time in the two years that I've lived then on this committee and I just feel like we should clarify?
So I just want to make sure, the gate receipt issue, there was also like a medical emergency in there somewhere where that absence was because someone physically couldn't get here, is that right?
Well, the position was vacant.
It was vacant, but it was vacant because the person who held that couldn't keep it?
They opted not to continue in the capacity, correct. It was posted, nobody applied for it for a lengthy period of time that it was up.
So the money was basically kept in a safe?
Yes.
It wasn't like wandering around?
Correct.
And we did put new mechanisms in place to ensure that we're in compliance with the management letter. Because I also know that there's been calls from the audit committee for us to have an independent audit, which I believe we do, we transfer funds from school choice to conduct. We recently did on student activities at Williams, correct?
The middle schools, correct.
And more importantly, I believe that their sole function is to manage the, is to audit or manage the management letter from the audit. The independent auditor, I believe, was Scanlon. So we are independently audited yearly, as is the rest of the town. So I'm not sure what their complaint is. Okay, just making sure.
That's fine, so what else you got?
So I took a tour about a week or so ago of Blueberry and Center. And, you know, being new to the town, it was kind of nice because, A, I never got that tour when I moved here to Blueberry, so I was kind of psyched to see all the nooks and crannies of Blueberry. I was blown away by Center School. You know, I always liked the architecture on the outside, but I thought it was, I was amazed at what I saw on the inside with the amount of space that they have. And I haven't gotten the chance to yet, but, you know, Neil, I do plan on coming over to Wolf Swamp and he's not, he's... Because I do want to be able to make decisions going forward, at least for the next year that I'm on the board, about all three schools, knowing what each, all three schools look like on the inside as well. And I do want to go to the middle school. I just talked about the fact that I'm coming over to Wolf Swamp to take a tour one day in the next week or so, hopefully.
You missed out when we were just over there all the time.
We have a very high standard of learning in Long Meadow. I know it's one of the things that I was drawn to, besides the sidewalks that I loved all over town, was the value of education that the people in this town placed. You know, when you Google Long Meadow, when you're moving to a town, you Google the town. I saw all sorts of information over the last ten years about people supporting the music programs at early ages, when that was, when there was talk about that going away. The discussions about the new high school and the value of the new high school. It just made me feel like the people in this town value education. I know that the parents of special needs kids are aware of the learning spaces at Blueberry, but it was unsettling for me to be in some of those spaces and see them. So I'm hoping that we can create some more equal learning spaces and teaching spaces for not just the students, but the teachers. And I am going to ask, and I haven't asked you yet, off camera, but I am going to ask that if there's a possibility that every August the school committee takes a tour of the schools before they open so that we don't get into a situation like what we're seeing right now again. Because I feel like if we had seen this, I don't know that we would have allowed it last year. I, it just, I went into one of the rooms and I was claustrophobic and could breathe and I was, you know, looking, I just thought about my own child and I just was sad. And then I went over to Center School and I saw the huge math resource room and the huge room that they have with a green wall and nothing else being used in that space. And the, the technology room, I was just, I was blown away. And so I just, I'm hoping that maybe we can do something on an annual basis...
I support that.
To hope that we can not be in this situation again. I don't want to talk too much about redistricting, but I just wanted to, until we get to the actual discussion. But the tours, I just felt like, you know, as a new person coming into town, you know, shame on me for not doing this, being on school committee for a year and a half already. So, you know, I'm going to make an effort over the next two weeks to make it to all three of the other schools that I haven't seen so that I can, I can make some better decisions going forward.
Every August, Tom and I tour the buildings with the principals. We'll be more than happy to invite all school committee and post that as a time for you to come and visit the schools with us.
If other people are interested.
Be happy to do that. Anything else?
I guess I would echo, I would echo that I would like to tour as well. I think that's a great idea.
I just want to make sure you're done before I... I am, I'm looking through my notes here. I, you know, typing away and I know everyone's talked about a lot of stuff and I've... Anyone else before we move forward? I'll go on to, we have no old business, so I'll go on to your report.
First of all, I'd like to reiterate what Michael said. It was a challenging day as we worried throughout the day about what was happening with one of our students. Accommodations really do with the police department. They were extremely responsive, over immediately. We had Pam Chaplin, John Stankowitz, Bob Ciano, as well as many others on the force working behind the scenes. There are detectives at homes and looking everywhere. Their professionalism and calmness was exemplary. Their ability to get ahold of the state police right away when we realized that this was a situation where we didn't have an answer for it. So I'd like to thank the police. They've always been there for us, they work behind the scenes and they've always answered questions about kids and done what's right. But today it just showed what a great police force we have and we're most grateful that the young man is safe and sound at home tonight. The principal search for Williams is on and the first meeting was held today where several interviews were conducted. Tomorrow, there'll be more interviews. Eight candidates were invited to come and interview with the team. As you can see from your written handout, there are dates scheduled for us to visit, for the candidates to come visit us, as well as for committee members to go and visit the candidate at their current place of employment. That gives you a chance to see the person and their element, how they get along with people. You hear from teachers and other administrators to get a sense of who they are. The pool will be narrowed down to one finalist by May twenty-seventh. I will do reference checks, contract negotiations that week. If all goes well, I'll make a final announcement to the public by June fifth. It takes a while to make sure that you get ahold of all the references people get back to. In contract negotiations is always a big part of hiring a principal. Transportation update, Tom has emailed a transportation letter to the eligible members of the community in regards to busing. It invites parents to begin registration for this service and a sign up has also been posted on our website. Tom's also going to send a letter to the Long Meadow News so that everyone's aware of what services are available. The elementary math pilot and visits continue. The pilot continues where they're looking at Go Math, Eureka and Expressions. A team of Long Meadow educators has already visited two schools where these programs have been implemented in order to collect information about their successes and challenges. A third visit will take place on May twenty-seventh. Teachers in Long Meadow will fill out a survey in June to give feedback about the three programs and the elementary math committee will make a final recommendation after reviewing all the data from surveys, meetings and visits. They have been meeting monthly as well, this has been an ongoing process. We will bring forward a request to the school committee for funding a new program this June, as that's been shared before. Negotiations continue, we have good news. A tentative agreement for the contract for Unit A was made between the LEA and Kathy Rosado, our president, is here in the school committee at our last meeting. Unit A will vote to ratify on May twentieth. If it's approved, then the school committee will vote to approve this contract in your meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-six, two thousand fifteen. There are also negotiations underway. Tom Mazza, Kim King and I continue to meet with units B, D, E, F and H to discuss contracts. I have a little note about SEAL as well, we have discussed that, but we did have a meeting last week. Mark has sent out two all calls utilizing the school messenger to let parents know that the, when meetings are scheduled. There were approximately twenty-five members in attendance, as well as school committee rep Katie Gerard. Nominations for officers were discussed. I think SEAL would like to see five to seven officers and it was decided to hold off planning the calendar until two thousand fifteen, sixteen. The next meeting will be held on June seven, June second at seven PM in the Special Education Office, which is across the hall. Mark also reviewed the rights of parents as required annually by state law. The traffic meeting, I have a letter from Stephen Crane that I'd like to pass out to everyone. And since we have people in the audience, I will read the letter to you. I'm writing to summarize our discussion today regarding crossing guards that may be needed to implement the proposed redistricting plan referred to as Plan A. Both the town administration and the police department are committed to ensuring safe pathways to school for all students regardless of what school they attend. However, the crossing program, the crossing guard program is constricted by budget pressures, so any deployment of guards must be carefully thought out and efficient. The information conveyed by you and the two parents in attendance highlight the complexity of this issue. The regulations on busing, the planned intersection improvements and the pending traffic study are all primary factors in the planning process. As discussed, much of the information that will be informed, these subjects is currently either unavailable or in preliminary form. Moving forward, the police department will work with the school district and the Department of Public Works to examine the issues, assess available resources and create a plan for pathways to schools from Plan A neighborhood that maximize the safety with the goal of eliminating the need for costly busing. Understanding the time sensitivity of this issue, we will generate plans for review by the school district and families affected by Plan A as soon as possible. As we discussed more than two months ago, there are many factors that will inform the redistricting decision. The general government departments remain committed to working with the school district to implement the redistricting plan that best meets the needs of Long Meadow students. Please contact me if you have any questions, sincerely, Stephen Crane. In my presentation later, I will review some of the roots that we looked at and discussed during the meeting, so I'll hold that off till a little bit.
All right, I'll hold some questions off till then too.
Okay, and then textbooks. We have a stack of new books for you and as has been our procedure over the past couple of years, all of these textbooks also have an electric component. For people in our audience, what you should know is we cannot just get an electronic textbook. If we do, it costs us seventy-five dollars. The textbook costs seventy-five dollars and the electric component's another dollar. So that we, the textbooks companies have made this to benefit them that you really need to get both in order to get the most bang for your buck. So all of these have electronic components. We have algebra books and world history books. We're also looking at AP Economics, that's going to be coming to you in a few weeks. I had a nice conversation with Matt Flanagan, he has students piloting those right now. Oh, the economics is in, great, okay. So they're in for your perusal, so you'll have a couple of weeks to look at them before voting on them.
Question about that, with regard to the electronic component, we, I mean, I don't, we wouldn't straight up adopt an electronic textbook without, you know, because we don't actually have, I mean, I know we've done some different learning in the middle schools, but with regard to that, I mean, we don't have, not every person in town has internet access. Not, we don't have complete one-to-one technology in the schools yet, so, you know, that's, that's a factor we choose, right?
We choose that and the teachers would tell you exactly that, they still prefer to have the hard copy for now. I think that's something over the next three to five years, you're going to see preference more and more for students learning electronically. I think the students are much more skilled and versed, your generation and Joseph's generation on learning online. The books are, as you can see, they're cumbersome, they're heavy to carry, so you're asking students to study five, six subjects and carry those books and electronic version is...
Yeah, no, it's definitely preferable. I was going to say, and so, you know, for, let's say for instance, like with the Discovery Ed, science and history in the middle schools, for students who don't necessarily or possibly could not have internet access, we make accommodations here?
We do, we do. We have not run into that problem. We ask and we make sure, we make sure the library is available, the wind block. We also have iPads that can be signed out. So we've discussed this in detail to make sure that every student has an opportunity to have a tool to use with the technology. Again, for the audience, Discovery Education is done in science in the middle school. It is completely electronic. It's our first completely electronic journey into education. Kids love it, teachers love it, so, but everything else goes with the textbook.
So when, you know, I haven't been to high school in a few years and my kids aren't there yet, so forgive me. When you said there's an electronic component, the entire text is an electronic text that they can access on a computer or iPad at home?
Most of them.
Most of them?
Some of them it's supplementary material, some of them it's tests or assessments that they can do online, but most of them it's, it's the electronic version as well as the hard copy.
Okay, because I'm just, I'm just thinking, I know that when I talk to some of my friends in other school districts of Massachusetts, I know that they're working towards a similar thing she was describing to me, electronic books that the kids are referencing on iPads, which for high schoolers is pretty great to not have to bring home a backpack full of however many books that are that size over there, to just take your iPad or device back and forth and just have to have that. Just wondering what...
I see us in the next couple of years going to one-to-one learnings for the middle schools and the high schools. We're beginning to talk about bringing your own device to the middle schools. We've done that at the high school. I think that we were on the more cautious approach than some districts that jumped in and then solved problems as they ran into them. We were cautious, we introduced it slowly. It's been very successful at the high school. And with the addition of the broadband, now we can also make sure students can get online. We're ready to do it at the middle school, we're looking at introducing that next year. I think you know too, Myon, the electronic reading books have been highly successful at the elementary school. So we're looking to see how we can increase one-to-one education at the elementary too. So we're in the midst of some good changes, Tom?
Yeah, I'd like to question why teachers can't issue these books in September and tell the students to take them home and leave them at home. Not leave them alone at home, but keep them at home so they don't have to have backpacks carrying something. I lifted that stack the other day when I was looking at them. It's, it's over forty pounds. And to ask a child to, you know, get a backpack, to carry that stuff in and out, seems absurd. And in fact, you know, you're using worksheets in the classroom or even, and most of these come with workbooks. There really is no need. And I taught for several years without ever asking them to bring the textbook in. I issued it in September, told them to take it home. And if they wanted to, to bring it in, yeah, well, sure, if they want to do it, but homework is, should be done at home. And that's what the textbook is.
That's actually what you just described, it's what most of my teachers do.
That's what most of them do, good.
I would probably say more, the older I got, the more I saw that. Actually, now as everybody has smartphones, a big thing is like you just take a picture of the page that you need and then you have it on your phone, so if you need to do it during ice, you can, you know, split it out. But obviously the electronic supplement, I don't know if that's actually legal, so never mind. But like you said, the electronic version would probably do just that. But that's for sure, as you said, that's probably what most of my teachers do, especially as I get into the older grades, I notice that more and more.
I'd like to see that extended right down to the elementary too. I mean, carrying huge weights to school is, that's absurd.
That is, I have to agree, John, as someone who likes to promote in our school biking and walking to school, and, you know, the number one complaint I hear from the parents once they get to sixth grade is the amount of books they have to carry on their backpack and how their kid can't be, I'm not going to ask my kid to ride or walk with a backpack that heavy, so I agree.
But we like to talk about inspiring creative thinking, critical thinking. A good critical question is, why are we doing this?
I'll bring that message back to the middle school principal. And just the last thing, again, the AP art show, absolutely magnificent, the talent is endless. You can purchase pictures from a... You can purchase pictures from photographers who are able to use a beautiful printer that leaf donated to them, so if you saw something that you liked, feel free to contact the art department about getting a nice piece of art for yourself. That's it.
Any other questions for Marie? Joseph, what do you have for us?
So, I don't know, I might be wrong about this, but the election to find my replacement is May 21st. Our next meeting is the 26th, so I think my, the new student representative will be selected at that point. I believe the way it works, as you guys were describing, is I'll come and introduce that person. Should be exciting, but I guess that...
I think that would be best.
I guess that would mean that tonight is my last full meeting as student representative. It's been a fun two years. I definitely think that me and the student representatives on the, on the committee that advised me, I think we were able to get a lot done. I just, I did a couple of them, electronic report cards, changes to the handbook, parking, we resolved, we worked to help, when the new school was built, the parking was a big issue, not anymore. A new principal was selected, we had a new school, absolutely didn't have much to do with that, but it was just, we went through it. And also, AP Econ was something that we talked about for a while. This is a summary of some of the things that we worked on. I would say that a lot of what we were able to do is because of the openness and willingness of the committee members and the superintendent and her team to listen to us and help us get what we want to do done, and I ask that you guys extend that same support to me, to my next, the person that holds this office next.
It's gonna depend on who it is.
From, from me to all of you, please do that, because I really want to thank you, all the committee members, superintendent, your team, and all the past committee members that I also worked with, because everything that I wanted to do, I thought you guys were always open, willing, and ready to listen. Some things about the Lancers tonight, we had a varsity lax game. You might have noticed the parking lot was a little full against Minichog. We won. Congratulations, team. Also, two really exciting things to report. Sammy Schneider on the girls varsity track and field team broke the javelin record.
Wow.
And Abby Mokwa on the same team broke the shot put record, which was her own that she set at the last meet.
So she broke her own record?
Mm-hmm.
That's cool.
So congratulations to both of them. That's really cool. I love hearing about school records being broken, because, I mean, obviously, that's really cool. And other than that, that's it. Yeah. So if there's any questions, this is your last chance to ask me, but again, I really wanted to just say thank you to everyone, because it's been a really fun two years.
I know, I know that there's an entire group of people at Rinaldi's watching this right now also clapping.
I increased your viewership.
You did. I don't know if it counts, but it's only on one TV, though.
You're right.
Well, I guess I have one question. What didn't you accomplish that you wanted to?
Good question.
I know.
Let me think. Well, I guess one thing that we just didn't accomplish was probably, we, I know you probably, you guys probably remember, we looked at open campus during lunch.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm not bitter about that, because we looked at it, and the committee came up with the, the right decision, which was the 27 minutes that we would have would be too much, but still, like I said, you guys definitely listened and watched the whole presentation, so thank you. Some other things I think might come up in the future, probably, if I just had to guess, technology. As technology becomes more ever-present in our lives, it's probably gonna conflict with the rules and the way we do things, just because we can't come up with rules quicker than technology can break them. So I imagine the person that sits here next year might come to you with some new things about that one-to-one technology, bring your own device, stuff like that, so that's probably, not that we didn't accomplish what we wanted, but that's where the biggest changes are gonna come.
Well, I said it at the last meeting, and I will reiterate at this meeting, that you are the third student representative that I've had the privilege of working with, and every single one of them has contributed a lot, but I think, first of all, having two years here helped you really contribute a lot. But, you know, your ability to get things through this board, to, you know, convince us that you were, that you were right, I think is admirable, and I think that, you know, the students at Long Meadow High School are better off because you helped them so much, and the rest of the SAC Student Advisory Council helped them so much, and I, you know, I honestly think that, you know, it's been a real pleasure to work with you, and we're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
We are.
Thank you very much.
Joseph, I think of you, I think of organization, effective communication, and collaborator. You presented facts in a very detailed manner. You were very thoughtful in your presentations. You brought your teams in when you needed to support your information, whether it was surveys, or you, you got information on parking, all that, so I commend you. You've been a pleasure to work with. It's been fun watching you over the two years. We know you're off to college, and we're going to miss you, but we wish you every success. You've been a very valuable member of our team.
Thank you very much.
And all I can do is echo what they have said, you know. I've had the pleasure of working with you for both years that you've been here, you know, one as committee member, one as chair, and, you know, the dedication that you and your fellow students on the Student Advisory Committee, the amount of time and effort that you put into, you know, it's not just saying, oh, you know, it's not just a bunch of high school kids saying, oh, I want to get this done. It's, you put, you stand behind what you're doing, and you put the time and the effort into it, you put the research into it, you know, which is a great example. You know, you should be very proud of the work you did, you know, I know we are, and, you know, wish you the best of luck, but, you know, we'll still see you around, and you still got to pass through all of us at graduation, so...
Of course. Yes, thank you very much.
I'm also just kind of concerned, who's gonna let the kids know what's going on anymore? Because you're, you're involved tweeting. I heard some, I heard one student say that your Twitter feed was, like, their go-to news source.
I've heard that a couple of times. I'm flattered by the people that say that.
Especially because, like, every single one of us would get an email from yours, is school canceled, so...
Maybe it's job requirement for his replacement.
Well, maybe now they'll follow Marie's Twitter feed.
Maybe.
Yes, and I remember, and superintendent, when you made your Twitter, I put it out to everybody to follow you, and I hope you did get a couple followers.
You did, I did, thank you very much. The retweets work, so thank you for showing me how to do it.
Yeah, I do hear that a lot, Mr. Clark, and I appreciate the people that say that, but I guess, I guess it's on to the students of Bryant to hear what I have to say.
We'll be following you carefully.
All righty, so moving on to the finance report.
Okay, the finance subcommittee met on May 6, 2015, and the subcommittee considered the budget transfers as outlined in your package in the attached document 7C1, and I want to make a motion. I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approve the budget revisions as outlined in the document titled Fiscal Year 2015 Grants and Special Revenues Number Three, dated May 6, 2015.
Okay, so motion and a second.
Do you want to talk to that time at all? It's pretty straightforward stuff.
It's straightforward. The Title I grant, there was an additional allocation of $1,303, so what you're saying here in the Title I proposed revision is the recognition of that additional revenue, but also some movement of some existing funds. And just, the document is dated May 5th, so if we could revise our motion, because it's dated to date not May 6, my apologies to Diane, I think I might have dated it on...
Okay, it should be May 11.
May 11, correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Tom, this does not reflect the total amount of the grant?
Correct. It only reflects the lines that are impacted by the proposed transfers. That is not the total grant amount for either one of the Title I or Title II-A.
Okay.
So as amended?
Okay.
As amended.
As amended.
Any other?
Well, certainly, yeah.
All right, so I'll call for the vote. All in favor? You can land a mouse.
Okay, the finance subcommittee considered the hourly rate paid to the summer custodial workers, and after reviewing that, motion is, I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approve the rate of $9.50 per hour for the summer custodial workers.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
How many do we usually hire?
This will be the second year we'll be looking for 12 positions.
Okay. And do they all work 40 hours?
Yes, we try to be flexible for family vacations and so on, so, but yes, it's up to 40 hours per week.
And these positions are posted online?
These positions will be available on schoolspring.com. It's where we post all of our vacant positions.
And the minimum age is 16?
Yes.
So high school and college students from town, yeah?
Yes.
They don't have to be town residents, but...
They do not, but we do try to give preference.
We try to, yeah.
Correct. Sorry, Ken.
I was just wondering, is that the typical, that's the typical ages, high school to college?
High school, yeah, early college-age students. And there are two areas we're looking primarily, we assist the summer cleaning of the schools, so we supplement the custodial staff with usually one or so each building. We also, last year, tried to use some summer work to do some painting throughout the district, and we're gonna try it again this year to try to put six positions in each area to address some of the needs, so we'll see how it goes.
How do you work at the high school?
Hold on, Katie was asking a question.
How does the summer cleaning work?
Well, yeah, I'm just wondering, do we change staffing and work, do our...
No, they work around the summer enrichment program, same with the summer high school specialized program. We work it out to clean the areas of the buildings the way the programs are not operating, and then when they conclude, usually the last week of July, first week of August, then we move it to that area.
All right, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? You land a mouse vote.
And that's it for finance subcommittee.
I know that we've talked about SEAL as subcommittees. Were there any other subcommittees that have met or need to report before I move on?
Yes.
Okay.
Naming just met before this meeting, and we are bringing two recommendations forward at the next meeting. I can go into that detail if you want, or if you want, we can wait for the next one?
We can wait for the next meeting.
Okay, great.
On the legislative thing, it's...
Yes, and then...
There's three budgets in place right now. The Senate has one, the House has one, and the governor has one. So what's, the normal procedure is they're gonna reconcile these. They have to, but that's not gonna happen until the 1st of July. Now, I heard Senator Rosenberg, who's the new Senate president, talk, and he's more inclined, I think, to be pro-education than previous folks in that position.
I'll just say that the Senate budget comes out tomorrow, so we'll know exactly where he is on, on all that.
Okay. Well, those are all in-house documents. That's what they proposed, then they get, then they get reconciled.
All right. So, moving forward to the topic of the evening, Marie has a presentation for us.
Yeah, thank you. Here you go. Thank you.
Katie, can I pass this down to you?
I'd just like to review some of the data that's been shared with you already as we are walking through this final, this final discussion tonight. The transition plan, Donna did an excellent job of talking about what the transition would look like. She would, she broke it down into three parts, students, family, and leadership. She spoke about a welcome letter that would go out to the families of, that would be welcomed into Center School. She would set up visits to Blueberry the week of May 11th, May 28th, to meet with students. She'd establish pen pals by grade level, and she's already created a welcoming video that is fantastic. It really highlights Center School. On the family front, she would host a new family social this summer. There'd be input letters for parents to talk about their children. There'd be meet and greet for parents only on June 3rd, and there would be IEP and 504 meetings starting the week of May 11th and going on. The third component would be leadership, where the transition team would be established. It already has been, looking at ways to make a smooth transition for any new students coming to Center. There'd be placement meetings scheduled throughout the spring, new contact lists for families so that they'd have people to get ahold of to learn about the new school, and then staffing decisions, moving classrooms, getting resources, that would be ongoing. Again, we sent out a parent survey. We asked people, would they voluntarily move from Blueberry to Center School? We had 37 respondents out of 61 requests. 61 families represented 82 students. You can see that overwhelmingly, people were not, were not willing to voluntarily transfer their children from one school to another. The elementary sections, this came up as to how many sections were there, and it had to do around planning budget. So we went through this information again. In 2014, 2015, there were 60.5 elementary sections. We projected based on numbers and based on if we redistricted that we would need 58.5 sections. Without redistricting, we also projected there would be 58.5. With redistricting, by taking two teachers that are allocated at Blueberry right now that could be moved to Center, and that would still re-keep the budget at 58.5 sections. Again, we have a watch list that's always going. Somebody earlier mentioned that there's already a class of 23 that are on our watch list, because we like to keep smaller class sizes in our elementary schools. We identified four cuts of Blueberry, but only budgeted for two to give us some flexibility within the budget. The budget reflects the two teachers at Blueberry that would be moved when redistricting occurs. The budget, the cuts and reallocations were planned in January. That's when we developed the budget internally. We worked with the principals in developing the budget to see what they anticipated they would need. This is our process. Every year, we look at that in December and January. The 4.7 total teacher cuts, people asked where those numbers came from when they looked at the budget. 2.7 teachers, there were two grade one teachers and 1.7 reading specialists at Blueberry, because class size is dropping in grade one, and there was a 1.0 kindergarten teacher at Wolf Swamp due to reduced numbers at Wolf Swamp. We also reduced the math coach, because we're going to be using the math specialist in each building. There was only one math coach for all three buildings, and we felt it was better to empower the math specialists in each of the buildings.
Is that a 1-F-E?
Yes, it is. It's a 1.0. We then looked at the space at Blueberry to see what would happen under different scenarios. We talked about the existing space concern, that there are four staff in one resource room, three staff, that includes two special education and one ELL teacher in the other resource room, plus one staff in a small room in the resource room. There are three staff in the reading room. The math teacher is in the small room, it's a 10-by-15-foot room, and there's a closet being used for two students and an outside consultant. Next, we looked at grandfathering, what would happen if we left the incoming fifth graders there. We would still have two to three staff in one resource room. We would have two staff in another resource room, two staff in a third resource room, two staff in the reading room. ELL would have its own space. Math would be moved into a larger space, and math space becomes space for students with outside consultants and testing space, which is what it was designed to do. We'd also grandfather, if we, if we grandfathered incoming fourth and fifth graders, what would happen space-wise? It would be two to three staff in one resource room, two staff in the other resource room, two staff in a third resource room, two staff in a reading room. ELL would have its own space. Math would remain in the smaller space. The closet would still be used, and there'd be no testing space. If we grandfathered incoming third, fourth, and fifth graders, it would be the same as grandfathering fourth and fifth graders. If we grandfathered incoming second, third, fourth, fifth graders, we'd have two to three staff in one resource room, two staff in the other resource room, three staff in the third resource room, plus one staff of, of, one staff in a small room and resource room, three staff in the reading room. Math would remain in a small space. Closet would still be used as services, and there'd be no testing space. If we grandfathered incoming first through fifth grade, it would be same as second through fifth, and if an additional first grade classroom was needed, it would be the same as existing space, with little overcrowding. This is Center's enrollment, and people had asked us to update the enrollment, what it looked like, so these projections are based on data from April 28, 2015. The numbers that you're looking at include the out-of-neighborhood students at their current school. school. People have asked what are out-of-neighborhood. There were sixteen students that are either school choice, MECO. They are children of staff members, or they are a parent request to be outside of their neighborhood attending Blueberry. Blueberry has sixteen out-of-district schools, while, while Center and Wolf Swamp have approximately thirty out-of-neighborhood students. If you, I'll just give you a minute to look at this. You've seen it before, but it gives you the grade, the projected enrollment of the students in the grade with the out-of-neighborhood students. What happens if redistricted plan without Blueberry fifth graders? The new numbers projected, and the class size and sections. This is the same chart and information for Blueberry's enrollment. These projections, again, are based on April 28th data. They include out-of-neighborhood students. This is the data if Blueberry Hill was grandfathered, fifth graders and siblings. Again, you saw this before. So, I'm just giving you this data again. You have Center without Blueberry Hill, fifth graders and siblings. It shows the class size sections, as well as other information, same as the other charts. These are the same that you've seen before, so I'm just gonna flip through them, and if you have a question, you can stop me.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
I know I'm going back a few, but so the first two slides that you showed us, Center enrollment and Blueberry's enrollment, that is simply with fifth graders grandfathered and no siblings?
These, these a bit, or, what is that?
Correct.
Correct?
It's just with the fifth graders, it's no siblings.
Because all the others are, so far, are with siblings, it looks like.
As you move on, it starts to do with siblings. This is Center without Plan, with, out Plan A, third, fourth, fifth graders and siblings. The redistricting committee met, and they endorsed Plan A with grandfathering the rising fifth grade students only. The vote was seven yes, one no, and seven abstentions. So, at this point, I'd like to open it up for, oh, one other thing. We talked about the maps during the, the meeting on crossing guards. You heard the letter from Stephen Crane, and he wrote that letter in conjunction with Police Chief and Bob Stankowitz, Captain Stankowitz. We looked at different routes, and we used the program to calculate the distance. RunMyRoute.com because it, it does the winding roads and all. This is the distance, if you go down Long Meadow Street from Forest Glen, we took the furthest point, Forest Glen Road, and went directly down Long Meadow Street. That's one point five three miles. The problem with this route is that with the mitigation from the casino, they may be doing construction, they are doing construction, on the intersection of Converse and Long Meadow. So, it does, it looks like there'd be a period of time that this area would be not safe for students to walk. They are not sure if they can do that during the summer. It will be a top priority to try and do it during the summer, but it, again, goes on contracts and bids.
It's also being run by the state, not the town, correct?
If we cross on Converse side, if the sidewalk is in, then you were able to cross there. Students are...
The construction, yeah.
Oh, the construction's a state, yes.
It's not a town-run program, it's the state's. It's a Massachusetts-run program, correct?
Correct. I'm deferring too on that by saying correct.
I talked to Police Chief today.
Okay, thank you. I just know it does have to go out to bid, and that they have to work within the parameters set by the bid laws. So, that would be one point five miles, would be the, one point five three miles, it would be the most direct route, but it may not be available for some period of time. Another route to look at is this goes down Llewellyn Street, it actually goes Laurel Street. Bob Stankowitz had, I'm sorry, John Stankowitz had originally thought that this, this was one of the possible routes that you could look at. But this is one point eight one miles, when you take the corner of Forest Glen and go down. Again, we used RunMyRoute.com. So, that's another possible route that would, that would cross students at Laurel Street. A third option, which is one point eight nine miles, is to go down from Forest Glen, go down to Benedict Terrace, down Llewellyn Street, and then go back up to Long Meadow Street and down, and that's one point eight nine, one point eight nine miles at the furthest This one, John Stankowitz, Bob Ciano, Stephen Crane, Alex Matreski, and Elizabeth Tarian and I met on this. One of the things we talked about was good sight line here. I know it came up tonight about whether or not there should be a light put in there as well, but John Stankowitz thought there was good sight lines if you used Llewellyn as the place to cross. Because it's possible that there's also going to be construction going on at Laurel Street during Converse and Laurel Street too. So, that, again, they have to talk to the traffic engineers, they need to know what the plans are, and they need to get advice from the traffic engineers. This is, again, another route that would, that looks at Forest Glen going down South Park Ave. It would be one point nine two miles if you started over at the corner of Forest Glen, went down South Park, went through Benedict Terrace to Llewellyn, and then up Converse and down Long Meadow Street. The original, one of the original ways that John Stankowitz had thought and suggested during the meeting was to go down Forest Glen, down Laurel Street, cross there, and then double back. But that's two point one four miles. So, he did say during the meeting that was too far. It would also raise the issue of busing, and that this would not be viable. It would, it would not seem likely that you'd have students who could walk one and a half miles and end up increasing that time to have them get onto Laurel. And, again, there could be construction at that site as well. Okay. So, at this point, are there any questions on the map routes or anything that we've gone through?
So, I think, well, before we go into further discussion, I would like to entertain a motion.
Want me to read it?
Sure, John.
I move on the recommendation of the redistricting subcommittee that the school committee approved the proposal to redistrict elementary students in the neighborhood described as Neighborhood A to be zoned for Center School as of the 2015-2016 school year. The proposal includes grandfathering rising fifth graders who currently reside in Neighborhood A to remain in Blueberry Hill for their final year of elementary school, 2015-2016.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Katie seconded. Okay, so I'll open it up for discussion. I'm sure each school committee member has something they want to say, so I think I'm just gonna go in order, so I'll start with you, Michelle.
I think, you know, I, I've broken this down to really seeing two problems that we are trying to solve. One is that Blueberry's overcrowded, and the other is that there's an unbalanced population in our elementary schools. I see the overcrowding at Blueberry as the immediate pressing problem, and the unbalanced population as something that we had made a long-term goal of, of the committee. I think the problem that I have seen is that we're trying to take care of both at the same time, and we're sort of treating them both as emergency-type situations or circumstances. We're working with a condensed timeline, multiple meetings, an overwhelming amount of information, data to evaluate and consider, emails. Everything has a motion in it, contention in it, and most of all, children's well-being are at stake. So, for me, the hardest part is that, I think, similar to an emergency surgery, trying to solve this in the way that we are is just not a good formula to make the right decision. That's just how I have, in the two months that I've been working on it, I just, I'm not comfortable with how we are, even just now, receiving the route information and guessing that it's gonna be safe, or relying on it being safe as we're voting for it, but don't know the complete, you know, emails today and people speaking. I'm just, I'm uncomfortable making this decision based on the information that I have right now. Couple that with a side effect that we found out from redistricting, you know, along, at the same time as other community people, that we could potentially be violating civil rights. That's, to me, been the most upsetting part of this process, because I feel like I'm ultimately responsible for it. And so, in looking at the overcrowding proposal that we have right now in front of us to move seventy children from Blueberry to Center, the problems that I see, one thing is that we've been asked by the teachers to have no new initiatives, and I can appreciate why. And all of a sudden, I think we're giving them two at the same time. We've been piloting a new math program at Blueberry in some grades for an entire year, and we haven't yet chosen the program for next year. And now, we're gonna redistrict up to seventy students all at once. That I consider as a new initiative. So, here we are with two new initiatives at the same time at the end of the school year. And as a former public school teacher with MCAS testing and constantly changing demands, much worse now than even when I was teaching, I believe this is very difficult, especially with this timeline. There's new prep work, there's training, and everything related to the new curriculum. And then we have a large disruption, I guess, even though we are planning for it and doing everything that we can, it's a change at a school. I'm very concerned by the MCAS scores dropping at the school. I, I haven't quite analyzed Alex's new graph, but I know I had seen Ms. Jasmine's before, and that, to me, you know, we had a large influx of students at one school, and that school had scores that dropped. And at the other school, they remained the same. That's alarming to me as a teacher, or as a former teacher, as a board member, as a taxpayer in the town, and as a mother of three elementary school students. Especially after knowing that our teachers asked us for no new initiatives. So, I, I feel like their opinion and that request matters to me. I hope it does to everybody here. Why would we do two things on, at once to them after they just asked that of us? The other issue that I have in terms of the staffing, staffing implications, at the last meeting, we left there and didn't know. I still, you know, this, this chart really doesn't, I don't think, differ much from the math that I ran, and if you're looking at Center and at Blueberry, we're actually increasing the amount of staff that we need if we're looking at just those two schools with redistricting under Proposal A, as voted by the redistricting subcommittee. So, staff, three full-time equivalents, the salary for that is a lot of money. Why wouldn't we use that money? And then if we're have, if we have more crossing guards at stake, why wouldn't we use that money to just try to alleviate the congestion at Blueberry in the short term and not cause so much change all at once to the students and the teachers at both schools? So, you know, I, I, we're also asking parents to juggle multiple drop-offs right now. I don't know how the, with, I don't know how they're gonna do that, in a, in a way that's fair to them or fair to the kids that would be in the carpool with them, or in the car going in a hu, in a rushed way. I mean, mornings are tough as it is, but to go to two elementary schools that start at the same time, or to ask one child to be late or early for their school while the other one, I'm not comfortable with that. I don't think that's fair to the children or to the parents. So, I, I would like to, to request that we consider using the savings and the sup, to supplement state, to use the savings that we could have from the staff to supplement space at Blueberry. You know, I've, I've brought you numbers for modular space. For one modular unit, it could be nine, about under ten thousand dollars a year. For a second one, then we're under twenty. On top of that, I looked into getting temporary, you know, full-height temporary walls, partitions, similar to those that we had at LHS. They're per-building code, they're, they have egress. They're generous and safe, and, you know, they would provide the right amount of soundproofing and everything so that we could take one large room and divide it into smaller rooms so that there would be separate spaces for the kids to learn. That, to change one large classroom into four small classrooms, could be, you know, and this is a very generous, so it would likely be much less, but it could be twenty thousand dollars. So, I, I support the grandfathering of all Blueberry students and their families and their siblings, and ask that we move forward with staffing and resources based on that so that we can put more time into researching and ensuring that Neighborhood A is the right solution. I actually question, you know, I had passed this out at the first redistricting committee meeting, but when I did the enrollment from the past, we just moved, when we moved Neighborhood A, there's that many kids in that neighborhood, we just moved the problem from one school to the next. So, I really feel like if I'm on this board for three more years, I'm gonna see the same thing over at Center, and I just don't think that's a good long-term solution either. So, I don't like either the short-term or the long-term thing that we have on the table right now, and I support, up first and foremost, grandfathering all the children and the siblings.
So, I have some things to say, but I have some questions as well. So, I asked last week for a couple of things. I have an enrollment chart with no redistricting except kindergarten for Center and Blueberry. And sorry if I didn't make copies for everyone. But I'll read you what I'm, what I have, when I, I'm looking at the number of teachers, which, to me, looks like the number of classrooms we would need, K through five. So, Center with no redistricting except for kindergarten would be eighteen teachers. Blueberry would be twenty-four teachers right now, with that fifth grade at twenty-one class size. And I know that that incoming fifth grade is a very high population of boys, so we have to keep that in mind when we can. So, then I go over to the charts here that we looked at today. I see Blueberry's enrollment, fifth graders, no siblings. I look at, I see twenty-two teachers. So, that, to me, says twenty-two classrooms. I'm just trying to put all this together here. Blueberry Hill with grandfathering fifth graders and siblings, same number of teachers, just are, and still second grade on the watch list with twenty-one students per, per class. So, I just want to make sure those are all kind of seem correct so far. Right now, currently at Blueberry, we have twenty-five teachers and classrooms. There's fifteen at Center, or seventeen and a half, sorry, and eighteen at Wolf Swamp. So, I did some research on modular unit costs as well. I called a place called ModSpace. He, the ModSpace.com, the guy, the sales rep is out of Connecticut. They serve the nation in modular classrooms as well as business spaces. I had a very lengthy conversation with him about the difference in office trailers and school spaces. Basically, he told me that leasing office space versus school space is very different. He doesn't think that the town would allow us to get any sort of office space pod onto a school property because of the strict codes for education. He said on top of the normal regulations, they deal with the entire North America. Massachusetts is extremely difficult, and the rules are tougher than, say, even Connecticut, where he works out of. I discussed two options with him. Two classrooms versus four classrooms. The four classrooms would have a hall down the middle with two classrooms on each side, windows in the classrooms, basically two entrances in case of fire, which some of our current learning and teaching spaces do not have. He said bathrooms could be added if they are needed, and adding a bathroom isn't our choice. It actually depends on how far away the modular unit would be from other building bathrooms. Massachusetts has strict codes on this as well. He said pricing depends on how far away the unit would be from electrical, mechanical, plumbing locations in the school that they would hook up to. He said to lease a two-classroom unit, it is about twelve hundred dollars a month. He said, I'll save you the math, it's fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. But, that does not include site prep work, which costs between thirty dollars per square foot and sixty-five dollars per square foot, depending on what needs to be done. Of course, that all is dependent on how far away it is from those things I mentioned before.
Kim, I don't, I don't interrupt you. Did he say what the standard square footage on a classroom is?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Have that in here.
Okay.
Seven fifty to nine hundred per square foot.
Seven hundred and fifty square feet to nine hundred square feet?
Yes.
Thank you.
He said, ah, let's see, so not, not including site prep, which is between thirty to sixty-five dollars per square foot. So, depending on what needs to be done. Two rooms at eight hundred square feet per room, and I did a estimate, I just kind of did an average of fifty dollars per square foot, is eighty thousand dollars. Again, a lot of what has to be done depends on how far away the unit is from electrical, mechanical hookups at the school. He said he, if we were serious about this, he would want our engineer, their engineer into our schools like yesterday, because of this, we were so far behind to follow on that. He said most of the people that are set up to start in June have already signed agreements in January. He said, let's see, typically, if you plan on leasing for five years, he recommends purchasing because it ends up, the cost of the unit, because it ends up being the same cost of the unit at that point, which he said runs about a hundred and forty-five dollars per square foot to purchase. The site prep also does not include connecting corridors, which the fire department typically like to be about twenty feet away from the building. Those run about a hundred dollars per square foot, and I just, I forgot to ask him how long the... ask him how long those typically are. I keep envisioning, when I hear people talk about pods, I envision it at the end of that first-grade hall at Blueberry, because that's the only space we have. And so I'm pretty sure we'd need a bathroom, because, so we would be on the high end of the square foot, because the bathrooms are all the way at the other end of the hall. Classroom units typically run between seven hundred and fifty and nine hundred square foot for a classroom. He actually didn't know what he had available at the moment. He would have to check his current inventory. He would start the day that school got out, and it would go the entire summer. He would wanna bring his engineers into our school ASAP for, if we're truly considering this. Let's see, he was familiar with what was going on in Ludlow. He said he thinks they are spending about two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand. You know, I have some concerns about the pod idea, because that's also where the PE does their outside activities. So you're gonna take some space away from the kids in the PE. And I, I don't know if the reason of overcrowding is why we're doing this already, but I know that my son has already complained to me numerous times about the gym being cut in half, and I have to assume that's because of the classrooms, the size of the.
Juice philosophy.
But, you know, so, you know, I just, taking more things away from the kids, taking more space away from the kids. I also, oh, I had one question. Would this have to be something that went out to bid? Because it would possibly run over, I mean, site prep alone would run over thirty-five thousand dollars. So we'd have to take time to go out to bid for this?
Yeah, I believe there's a specific section of law, I think it's chapter one forty-nine, section forty-four, actually subsection E, which is specific to.
Are you sure?
Whichever one it is.
So, yes.
You think yes, we would have to go out to bid?
Yeah, it would, definitely.
And what does, how long does that process take?
Uh, it would.
With like six weeks left?
Yeah, it would probably take, you'd have to develop bid specifications, you would have to advertise it for at least two weeks. Again, depending upon what the total cost of the project would be, you might have to go into goods and services for broader advertising. So.
Okay.
I would say a minimum of four weeks.
Okay.
For the advertisement?
Advertisement will probably be minimum of two, and then you have to go through a whole lengthy process of evaluating bid responses and so on.
Just trying to see if modular units are actually even a solution that we can even think about.
The one thing that he may not have mentioned is also the utility cost in actually running them.
Oh, actually.
Because I was talking to, to a guy who does Tom's job in Sudfield, who used to be on school committee here, and they just offloaded their modular classrooms, and they watched, he didn't say how much the utility cost went down, but he, he was like, wow, there's huge savings, I wonder what that's from. And then he said, oh, the modular classrooms that we no longer use. So there's, that added cost, because they actually, I think the ones at Williams actually have air conditioning. Well, most things at Williams do now, but they did at the time, so.
Okay. So, so that's a little bit of research that I have done on modular space. Safety. I talked with the police chief this morning. I got, I got an email Friday from one of the parents that raised a flag for me. I sent him an email, the police chief, he said to call him this morning, so I called him. Right now, he said, any construction in town for the casino is still up in the air, and there's no timeline and no definitive plan yet. He said, construction, by the way, which will be taking place not only at the corner of Long Meadow and Converse, but at Laurel and Converse as well. He said, everything is very preliminary. Nothing has been reviewed with the engineers yet. Traffic studies have to be completed. He said, while everything is still a work in progress, he said they are absolutely committing to, committed to taking care of the kids, to taking care of getting the kids to school safely. He said, even if we have to put a police car out there, which we've done before, he said, once a plan by the state has been established, they can then put together a plan to get the kids to school safely. He stressed that they are committed to that priority, and it is their priority. And he, like, every time I asked him about something that I read, or something that someone said, he said, he can't make any definitive statements about what is gonna happen in that space. He said, it's very preliminary, it's, it is still a work in progress. He said, we just don't know what's gonna happen there. He said it is, it's, it's a program, I guess the, it's being run by the state, and they are relying on the state to tell them a timeline. They have not sat down with any engineers. There are still traffic studies that need to get done. So it's very much a work in progress. But he expressed, I asked him, I said, I'm going to be on camera today, and can I read, can I say to the town that you, you are committed to taking care of getting the kids to school safely? I said, I know that we are, as a school committee, I mean, I speak for myself, I assume everyone, I said, but when you tell me that you'll take care of getting the kids to school safely, he said, absolutely, that's, that is their priority. And he mentioned the fact that they put police cars out there before, and he said he doesn't have a problem doing it again if that's what has to be done. He did, he spoke with very firm confidence, and I believed him. So I just wanna, you know, I got that email on Friday afternoon, getting ready, you know, for my sister's wedding, and stepped out of the room and, you know, sent, got yelled at from my family for sending a note about this, but, you know, this is something that is very important to me. And, you know, I've seen a lot of emails with a lot of thoughts, and the safety, you know, kinda stuck out for me, kind of threw up a red flag. So for me, talking with the police chief was very important this morning. I talked with a, I just wanna bring up some of the different things that were brought up throughout the last couple of weeks, so I apologize, I might take over at a time. The real estate value, some people have mentioned, I had a conversation with a real estate agent in town. I asked her about Plan A and real estate value. She said that she did not think she could put a value or a percentage on it. In her opinion, was that it certainly changes the desirability of a home in that area. She said, much like if someone had a pool. Someone won't look at homes if it has a pool. She said someone moving within town that moves to a certain area of town for a specific, specific school likely wouldn't look there. Someone moving from out of town would have less of a problem. They just wanna know which school their kids will be going to. She said, knowing what school their kids are going to is very important to people. So Plan E would not have been a good idea. She said on her listing, she puts what school the home is associated with, because her people wanna know where the kids will be going, and that they will be going with their neighborhood friends. She continued to stress the idea of the kids going to school with their neighborhood friends, because that is a big deal for the people moving into this town. I think we saw that over and over with the letters that we got from some, some of the community. They wanna know their kids are going to school with their neighbors. She has a listing currently in Neighborhood A. It is listed as a Blueberry school. She has had to let prospective buyers know that there's a chance it will be a Center school. I asked her, has she had anyone say, oh, forget it? And she said, absolutely not. She said, they just wanna know what school their kids are going to, and that they will be going with their neighbors. People move into Long Meadow because of the close neighborhoods. The ability to walk or ride to school with your neighborhood is huge. And then she again stressed that E would have been horrible. So making, so in her opinion, making sure the kids all go to the same school, it was very important. And I want, I just wanna thank all that were involved on the subcommittee. I know that it was not an easy job to come up with plans to do something that no one wants to do. All of the time you spend reviewing pros and cons, the various ideas, all the data that you research and review time and time and time again. I like what Alex said at the end of the last meeting. At the end of the day, we all have to live with each other and see each other in Big Y. I'm gonna add to that. This is a small town. We see each other walking down the street, out at the ball fields, or at CVS on a daily basis. I hope that we can move past whatever decision is made tonight and remain a friendly, small This is not going to be an easy decision. It, for me, it's gonna be a decision based on the fact that Blueberry is overcrowded. Some may not agree, and some may have ideas on how to address it. I know the process was not ideal, and we heard that over and over, to get to where we are today. It doesn't change the fact that something does need to happen. The process, I will leave up to the school committee to bring up during the superintendent's review. But a solution, I'm hoping that we can find a solution for the kids and the teachers at Blueberry today. I guess, I think I've, that's, I kind of have gone all over the place with my thing. I guess, you know, I'm torn right now between these two that I'm looking at, with the Blueberry fifth grade, no siblings, and the Blueberry fifth grade with siblings, because the teacher count seems to be the same, the classroom count. I guess my question, because I keep hearing from people, is that they want their kids to be going to school with their neighborhood friends. I know that going to two different schools creates a challenge. How many parents is it? Is it five families still?
Five.
Five families are still, um, I know it's a tight neighborhood. I know we've suggested possible carpooling during the months when they don't bike to school. I know that, I mean, I don't, you know, I hope that, somebody did bring up the idea that adjusting parent-teacher conferences and the back-to-back school nights. And I know that you sent a note to the principals today, asking them to keep in mind that if we do have parents at two different schools, that we consider back-to-school nights, different nights for the schools, and as well as conferences, because that does raise a flag for me. Trying to think what else. You know, so my, I don't know, I'm just gonna throw out a different, you know, if I go with Blueberry Hill grandfathering fifth graders and siblings, what happens next year? Do we take the siblings that were grandfathered and put them with their neighborhood friends that they need to be going to school with? Like, are you gonna have, you know, what is it, four, six, seven? I mean, I don't know how many siblings there are. What are there?
Fourteen.
Fourteen siblings? Are we gonna have fourteen?
Eleven?
Eleven?
Eleven siblings, eleven or twelve siblings.
I got around to eleven siblings.
Let's say around twelve, with give or take a couple. Are we gonna have twelve kids going to Blueberry for the next five years, going a different direction than the rest of their neighborhood? Because to me, we've heard a lot about how they want their kids to go to school together. So I guess I'm just torn between thinking about that. Like, do we say, okay, for next year, everybody goes to Blueberry, and then those kids need to transfer next year, so they can go with their neighborhood? I don't know.
That, that wouldn't need to be discussed. My understanding was that if the siblings were grandfathered, they'd stay there. But you're saying grandfathered for one year of the fifth graders, then going back?
I'm just, you know, and I don't, I don't, it's something I thought about this afternoon at three o'clock, so, I mean, it's not something that I've really talked about with anyone, but I just, I'm just trying to create a way that, you know, for the one year that the fifth graders are at Blueberry, and they're having concerns about multiple drop-offs, and keeping in mind the fact that people want to go to school with their neighbors, like, they're, and I get it, and that's why people move to the town, and that's what we've heard from residents, that's what we've heard from, that's what I heard when I talked to other people, real estate agents. I just think that, I'm just trying to come up with another creative option that keeps the parents in one school. I don't know. I, yeah, you know, yeah, I guess, I don't know, I don't have anything else I wanna say. Just, I don't know which way I'm going yet, but I guess I'd like to hear more discussion about that.
Okay.
So I'll be brief.
Sorry.
I wanted, I wanted to start, I think that I need to make a disclosure, that I have a kid who's impacted, in that she's currently receiving services at the Center preschool. So she'll be moved to the Wolf Swamp preschool for services when this happens, so just to be completely open about that. And that actually brings me to making sure that I get my kids and myself to my own homeroom, and that's five schools, at about the same time. So I understand, I mean, it's difficult, but we managed to get there. In the four years that I've been on this committee, this is honestly the most difficult thing that I've taken on. There's really no possible way that we could have done this to make everybody happy. Look, you know, hindsight is 20/20, but really, the position that we're in right now is where we are. While I understand it is difficult to leave behind a beloved, beloved school, the reality is that we're asking kids to move from, from one exceptional elementary school with a really great community to another exceptional elementary school with a really great community. And that's, that's it at the end of the day. I wish there was a way that we could make everybody happy, that we could make sure that all needs and wants were met, but it's just not possible. I think it's cheating our students and our staff to put a Band-Aid on this, to try and make a temporary solution instead of sort of really going out and solving the problem. Finally, please don't confuse a differing opinion with not listening. I really, I've read every single email. I've had several conversations, more than I can even count. I really value everybody's feedback and the time that everybody has put into this. So thank you all very much.
Michael?
So I wanna begin by thanking the members of our community who took the time to write in and be active participants in this process over the last several months. Since February, we've been hearing from parents in what has now been called and deemed Neighborhood A, and several others from all corners of the community as plans and proposals progress from one end of the town to another. And the first thing that I learned is that redistricting's not an easy process, and I think that's been acknowledged time and time again. And it probably goes without saying that it's not an easy process. But it also shouldn't be an easy process. It should be a process of community involvement with stakeholders who have an opportunity to weigh in and talk about the impact on their neighborhood, and it should be a process driven by data, like enrollment data and historical trends in population. And on those measures, I think that the redistricting subcommittee had some success. I think that we had a community-wide discussion with stakeholders who participated in a public debate and exercised scrutiny throughout that process. On another measure, I do believe that we could have done a lot better. I think one of the main things that I've heard throughout this process, and from a lot of people who have been in this room tonight, is that the process itself was flawed. And to that end, I do tend to agree. And we could have, and we should have done things differently. But I would also suggest that regardless of which way we chose to engage in the process, people would be upset. And I don't think that that's an inappropriate response to a topic like redistricting. It is emotional, it is personal, and it is inherently unpleasant. But I also think that dwelling on the process, rather than dwelling on the problem and the solution, doesn't do anybody any good, and it serves as a distraction from the actual issues, especially since this committee and the superintendent herself have acknowledged that the process itself was flawed. All of those experiences have led us to this evening, where we're going to determine the future of a portion of our community. And that's a community that values education, and a community that has time and time again demonstrated that it only wants best for children. The fact of the matter remains that right now, students at Blueberry Hill School don't enjoy the same equity and resources as students at Center School and Wolf Swamp. Rather, they have the same amount of resources in a larger population. Additionally, Blueberry has significant space issues, which we've been hearing about for a while now, with students in special education receiving services in numerous rooms of varying sizes, including a one-hundred-square-foot supply closet. And what struck me at one redistricting committee meeting was when Marie Pratt said that she needed relief, when she needed help. And that's someone who is in that building, on the ground, every day, asking for relief. Redistricting is the only proper way to alleviate the strains on that population at Blueberry Hill School, and because of that, I support most of Plan A this evening. We, you know, I also believe that we kind of have a tendency, and we've done this historically, not to take working parents into account, whether it's been early release days or late start days. And so then, I'm very supportive of grandfathering all rising fifth-grade students and all of their siblings in the younger grades. Alternatively, I would be very supportive of allowing those families to choose whether they want.
Excuse me, that's not the motion before us. The motion before us was as read.
And I can amend that.
Rising fifth graders only. Well, you haven't made an amendment.
I'm happy to make that amendment. John, I'm still speaking.
Well, is that in order, is that in order?
I was letting everybody have a chance to speak, and then there can be further discussion if we're going to make an amendment or not.
So alternatively, I would propose that we allow those students at Center to have a cho, or those families to have a choice between Center and Blueberry, which would be a solution to what Kim's problem was down there. I am also incredibly supportive of ensuring that every student with a 504 or with an IEP is provide, and their family are provided with very specific and transparent set of criteria through an evaluation process to determine whether or not they should be moved. And I know that we've committed to that, and I know that, but I need to see that in action, and that's where I, that's where, what I'd like to see. And so I would propose an amendment to the motion, uh, to either grandfather all existing fifth graders and their siblings, or allow those families the option to choose between schools.
I would just ask that you hold on that until we hear from everyone, because I believe that's gonna lead to discussion of whether that's for a one-year timeframe or whether that's permanently, because then that, um, affects siblings who are not yet in school. So I think that, I'm hearing what both of you are saying, and I think there are some questions surrounding that that would need to be discussed amongst the committee, but I do wanna give everyone on the committee a chance to express their views before we have that discussion, if you don't mind.
I'll withdraw temporarily.
Thank you. John?
Okay, I rise to, I'm not gonna rise, I sit here, to, uh, support the proposal as read. Um, I think we should thank the committee who spent several months of their precious time on this planet, working on this project. I think we had plenty of input. I disagree with my colleague here about whether it was flawed or not. I mean, people are throwing out violation of due process, uh, denial of equal protection of the laws as if this was a Supreme Court case. It was an open forum. Public was invited at every step of the way, and anyone who wanted to, and maybe more than should have, were able to stand up and speak their piece. This speaking their piece has gone on right up to the present moment. Little bit of background, I'm the senior member on the school committee. I've been living in the town of Long Meadow since 1976. I remember the school dispute when we closed Converse and, uh, what does it, Greenwood over on, on Maple Road. Uh, you wanna remember a fight? That was a fight, that was a serious one, uh, but not that this isn't. However, because of pressures and because of forces that animate us and because of our desire to keep our eyes on a child and to keep, uh, resources that we have focused on our main project, it seems to me we have to go through with this redistricting. And I support it as presented, and I'm gonna be very brief. I say, vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Liz?
Um, I wanna thank you, thank the redistricting committee and administration for working countless hours, collecting data, meeting and discussing, um, this redistricting process. Um, I wanna say that Long Meadow kids are very fortunate, um, to have a choice to go to a terrific school. A lot of kids don't have a choice, or they have to enter a lottery. And you look around at the community or the wider community in Springfield, our kids are so fortunate to be here. Um, and as elected officials, we're often faced with difficult and unpopular choices and decisions to make, and I have made my decision with an open mind, with no secret agenda, and I've listened to all sides of, um, all sides and especially after emotional and clearly heated debates. So I wanna say my decision is based on the betterment for all students and the school system as a whole.
Thank you. Okay. So before we talk about...
Here's your.
Yes, I know, I get to do mine. Um, as you all know, I've been involved with the redistricting process from the beginning, starting back in October of 2014. Now is not the time to debate whether or not the community should've been involved, starting at this time or not. Superintendent has explained her rationale, has apologized if she has upset anyone for how she chose to handle the process. What I wanna address now is that much thought and research has been done since this process began in the fall. Many neighborhoods were looked at, many options were discussed. There are many hard choices that need to be made so that all of the elementary students in Long Meadow have access to equal education. This equality comes from several different perspectives. Data shows that enrollment projections are on the decline. While this may be true, one may question why Blueberry Hill is overcrowded now, when in fact, there have been years in the past when they have had actually over 100 more enrolled students. What needs to be remembered is that due to the programs that we have added over time, in addition to bringing home students who had been previously placed out of district along with new families moving into our community, brings us to where we are today. First and foremost, I want all children to have the same opportunities in all areas of education, which includes our specialists, our adjustment counselors, our technology specialists, just to name a few. This access is currently limited to all students at Blueberry Hill, as each elementary school has one literacy coach, one adjustment counselor, and that will be as of the 2015-16 school year, and one technology specialist. By simple math, that one specialist is serving either close to 500 students at Blueberry Hill or the approximately 350 students at Center or Wolf Swamp. The amount of time that that specialist can give to each student is lessened just by the number of students they must serve. Secondly, classroom space is an issue at Blueberry. Almost everyone who has taken a tour of the building can attest to this fact. There are no extra spaces left to be repurposed, as even storage closets and the nurse's office space is currently being used as instructional space. When I toured the building, I did not see any more spaces that could possibly be moved into a modular office space that has been suggested in order to give us more educational space. This coupled with the fact that Center School will have four empty classrooms this fall when the preschool program moves over to Wolf Swamp allows all students in our community to have educationally appropriate spaces in which to learn. The issue of cost has been brought up of late, with many stating that it would only cost $40,000 a year to allow all students to be grandfathered. I'm confused by these assertions, as during redistricting subcommittee meetings, especially the one held on April the 16th, the superintendent provided information that just to keep status quo at Blueberry Hill, the staff itself required would cost $231,000. If the staff was adjusted to provide the equity that these students deserve, that would cost an additional $82,000. Also, the discussion of modular classroom spaces, um, that night was mentioned that if we were to obtain them, that would be anywhere from an additional 150 to $250,000. I believe the $40,000 number applies to modulars that could be used for storage and/or conference space, but not for instructional spaces. While that seems like a small price to pay, it doesn't provide us the equity and education that we are striving for. Grandfathering is another difficult topic for many reasons. While families would like siblings to remain together, it does prove difficult on levels. Splitting up a neighborhood defeats the idea of neighborhood schools that we've heard from many that are important and desired, desirable in Long Meadow. Also, how is it fair that because one family happens to have a student who might be grandfathered with a fifth grader, that their siblings get to stay while their friends are being asked to move? Even more concerning is that classroom space that may be planned to be gained by redistricting has the potential to be lost if siblings are grandfathered simply due to the grades that they are in and the class sizes that would ensue. If we want to keep class sizes in line with the other two elementary schools, we may need to add more sections back at Blueberry Hill with siblings. It also means that there would be, still be closets used, there would still be no testing space, there would still be up to three special education teachers using one classroom. To suggest grandfathering all current students and their families at Blueberry does not make for equal education for Blueberry Hill students for the next five to six years. I can empathize with those who do not feel that redistricting is fair for their children, but I also take my role as a school committee member seriously when looking to do what is best for all children, no matter what their grade level is, no matter what their address is. I value our community and the fact that we are known for our excellent schools. Safety was and will continue to be the utmost importance in decisions that we make as school committee members. The superintendent has reported throughout the process that meetings have been held with the chief of police regarding changes that will potentially be made. Unfortunately, there are many other changes other than those that the Long Meadows public schools are facing that are going to be occurring in Long Meadow, changes that the school committee has no control over. The construction that is occurring along Long Meadow Street, the traffic studies, the construction taking place on I-91 and the overpass, the casino, all of these are factors beyond the school committee's control. It is unfair to suggest that the schools wait until the results of these projects are known, just as it would be unfair for the schools to ask the construction hold off until our redistricting is completed. There will always be construction and road repair and road work somewhere in Long Meadow. As a school committee, we must remain committed to working closely with all of the appropriate authorities to ensure all of our students are safe in however they choose to travel to school. I'd like to join my colleagues in thanking all of those who participated in the redistricting committee meetings, and I'd like to thank all of you in the community who took time to email or to write your thoughts and concerns to us. Please know that they have been read and have been taken into consideration. I'd like to close by asking all of you within our school, within our community that remember, while your school committee members are elected officials, we are also your neighbors. We're the parents of your children's friends, the people who you see around town at the Big Y, at the shops, at the ballfields. I ask that you please do not take away any one of us votes as a personal attack against you or your children. I know that our school committee members do not take our responsibilities lightly. We work diligently to educate ourselves about all of the factors surrounding any issue that we address. The decisions that we make, we make in the best interest of all students in Long Meadow. So...
I gotta amend that.
I would now like to open it up to, I believe, Michael and Kim, you want to discuss an amendment?
Sure. So I move to amend the recommendation of the redistricting subcommittee, that the school committee approve the proposed, the proposal to redistrict elementary students in neighborhood described as Neighborhood A to be zoned for Center School for the 2015-2016 school year, that this proposal includes grandfathering rising fifth-grade students who currently reside in Neighborhood A to remain at Blueberry Hill School, and that the siblings of those fifth graders be grandfathered as well, or that all be grandfathered as well, uh, or that those families with fifth grade, with fifth graders and siblings have the option to choose between Blueberry Hill School and Center School.
Second.
Okay, so... And I'll note that my note, my motion reads that all siblings, not just existing enrolled, all.
Yeah, there's one that I know of that doesn't have a child in school yet. Does that sound correct?
All right, so we have a motion and a second on grandpa, keeping the proposal as it, as proposal A with rising fifth graders and all siblings to remain and, for 2015-16. I would like to start the discussion as to what the plans are after 2015.
Oh, you know what? I'll amend that, 'cause it should be into the future, instead of 2015-16, that's what my motion is.
So your proposal is that they stay at Blueberry until they graduate out of Blueberry?
Yes. Let me amend, as, let me amend that to say that...
So your proposal then, just so I'm clear, your proposal then is going to split a neighborhood and make that neighborhood not have neighborhood schools?
My proposal would be to allow those parents who choose to keep their children at Blueberry...
If they choose.
If they choose, but also allow them the option of moving all of their families, their entire family to Center.
Well, right now, they do have the option to move. The proposal as it was first read, the parents of fifth-grade students do have the right to move their entire family, including their fifth grader?
Right, I just reiterated that in the motion.
Okay.
Then you're not, then you're not amending the motion.
Well, no, I amended it so that all of their...
You amended it so that all siblings may remain. Kim?
So, I do need to disclose, I probably know every single family that that is, and my children play with them on a daily basis. Um, that being said, it's probably, you're saying it's five, um, and there's quite a few of them that are my children's very best friends, so this decision is very, very hard for me. Um, so, there's two of them that are just fifth graders, correct, out of the five families? So there's only three families that will be, that would possibly be impacted by the fact that we are, would grandfather siblings. Does that sound correct?
There are five fifth graders with siblings.
There's five fifth graders with siblings?
Marie, can you come on up?
'Cause I know one...
So that everyone can hear you.
Oh, I know, well, okay, yeah, wait a minute. There's one fifth grader that is no siblings.
There are actually 19 fifth, uh, rising fifth graders that live in that neighborhood. Twelve of which do not have younger siblings, five of which have younger siblings.
Five have siblings, okay, I'm sorry, I was misunderstanding that. Okay, five have siblings. And of those five siblings, there's about 12?
Roughly, yes.
Maybe 13, 'cause there's one that might be. Okay. And so the idea, the motion is to allow the siblings, all of the siblings...
The 12 siblings and any students not yet enrolled in school, so, in essence, the families.
Right. And have, let them have the decision if they choose to go to two separate schools or go to all one school. Let those families choose.
Okay, I will second that.
You did.
You did, and, okay.
Katie? So while, while we're on amendments, I just wanna make sure that we can do this and not have to have another vote, but should we include the movement of preschool to Wolf Swamp?
No. That's an administrative decision.
So we don't have to do that?
Preschool's always moving to Wolf Swamp?
That, that is going to happen.
So that's not something that we have to include?
No.
I just don't wanna have to do that.
Yeah, that, that needs to happen for programmatic and staff movements.
Not yet, I just wanna make sure that, um, my, my concern with the motion with grandfathering siblings, and believe me, I'm completely empathetic to being at More Than Fun School for the drop-off. I mean, it's something that we, I do every day, um, is really, it's a safety issue of having, like, kids sort of, like, going in separate directions here, that, especially when we, when we're talking about younger grades, that when they start dispersing like that, it just makes me nervous.
Well, that's why, that's honestly why I was thinking, like, maybe they're grandfathered for the first year, because that way the third and second graders can go with their fifth-grade sibling to school, but then, you know, I know it doesn't, it's not ideal, and none of this is, but, but then, next year, 2016-17, they're going to school with their entire neighborhood. That's, I don't know, and...
That just delays the pain a little.
I know it does, and I, it's my Hail Mary.
Michelle?
I just think, you know, in terms of especially the safety, why don't we let the parents decide that? You know, I don't feel like we should be a better judge of, you know, whether that child should go to a different school than the rest of their neighborhood. I think that should be up to the parents, that's, you know, and, and to the neighbors that, that have a feeling that they want the whole neighborhood to go to one school. If that parent chooses that they want their family to go to one school, I think that's a better, a more fair decision.
Yeah, I mean, imagine in this circumstance where we're basically talking about five families, right, who have...
Have siblings.
Siblings, you know, that they're in this circumstance probably better equipped to decide who their kid are gonna ride to school with, and, you know, and how they're going to go, and where they are gonna go. And some of them may decide that they wanna go to Center, some of them may decide that they wanna keep their family at, at Blueberry and they drive to school. I mean, that's, you know, but I, I think that we are already, you know, doing something that is inherently unpleasant, right? We're now asking these parents on top of moving their children to go to two different places for a year. And I understand that, you know, we have parents who go to two different middle schools, or, I mean, an elementary school and a middle school, that, you know, Katie goes to four different schools, including the one where she teaches, and people make it work, but, you know, this I feel like is, it's, it's kinda like, I feel like it's the right thing to do.
And I can understand and empathize with that, but I also then think about the families who might have a rising fourth grader, and just because their kid isn't a year older, they don't get to stay. And I, I'm trying to think about the equity there. Could perhaps a compromise be that since we do have a policy that families can request school choice, could those five families apply annually for school choice as other families in town do to go to a school that is not their home school?
I mean, well, I...
School choice?
Inherent to that policy of asking...
I don't think that's the policy of school choice.
Yes, it is. We, we do have...
I thought school choice, as Massachusetts law says...
Different school choice.
Different to school communities.
Parental request, I'm sorry, to clarify.
Yeah, but inherent to that parental request policy is that those students remain in that school for the remainder of their time in that school.
No, it's not.
No.
It's annually.
We have time, annually?
Yeah.
Yes, they apply annually.
I feel stupid now.
I mean, I'm, I can, I understand what you guys are saying, and I understand from a parent's point of view, um, you know, I've, I've been in the same situation, where attending multiple schools at, at the same time with just how my kids are spaced out, but I just, when we're ta, when we're tackling the hard decision of moving an entire neighborhood, I, I just feel for the parents of rising third graders or rising fourth graders who, they'd really like to stay at that school as well, but they can't because of the grade that they're going into. So how is it fair that their friend, their kid's friend gets to stay just because... So how is it fair that their friend, their kid's friend gets to stay just because they have a fifth grade sibling? John, then Kim.
Well, maybe then our motion is flawed. We should eliminate the proposal that says allow rising fifth graders. Just shut it down completely, okay? That solves that problem.
I will support that.
Well, you know, if you're going to be a fifth grader next year, and you're in Neighborhood A, you're going over to an excellent school, Center School.
Here's the thing, John.
End of discussion. Seriously, the point of this whole exercise, and why you people put so many man and woman hours into it, was to reduce the number of people in Blueberry Hill School. That's the goal. Eyes on the prize. Now you're going to start mitigating. Well, you know, there's another thing you could throw in here, too. If I have, if I live in, well, if I have a fifth grader who's going to be a, a rising fifth grader, but I have someone else that's going to be assigned to Center School, well, instead of driving one to Center School and one to Blueberry Hill, why don't I take the fifth grader to Center School?
That's my motion.
But they can do that now, can't they?
That's inherent to this proposal...
So you don't need another motion, that just confuses it.
No, I understand that, but I guess my...
You're, you're giving them the option of...
The option to stay at Blueberry.
To, the whole family to stay at Blueberry, even though the original proposal has the option for the fifth grader.
The very beginning of Marie's report indicated that people at Blueberry Hill don't want to do that. That's why we're for, we're creating this draft.
Okay, Kim?
This volunteer army isn't materializing.
Right. Kim?
So, the point of this was to reduce the number of students at the school and reduce the number of classrooms. Right now, there's twenty-five classrooms at Blueberry, seventeen and a half at Center, and eighteen at Wolf Swamp. So I'm looking at it as a classroom standpoint, and I'm looking at Blueberry's projected enrollment, fifth grade, no siblings, and I see twenty-two classrooms. I see second grade with twenty-one kids, I see fifth grade with twenty-two, all the others are fifteen, seventeen, seventeen, and nineteen. So I go and I look at Blueberry Hill with grandfathering fifth graders and siblings. I see the same second grade with twenty-one, class size projection with four teach sections. I see fifth grade with twenty-two and four. The others are nineteen, eighteen, eighteen, and sixteen. They're both giving us the same solution. The only difference is that it doesn't hold true to what a lot of people wanted, which was the whole neighborhood sticking together. And I feel like if we make that the parents' decision for those five families out of the large number that there are, I would feel comfortable with that.
I guess the point that what, some of the issue is that, like, it's, is it fair to give those families that decision when we are not giving that decision to the rest of those families? It's, you know, that's sort of the equity issue that, I don't know.
No, it's okay. And I think the other, I'm sorry, Michelle, I...
Just, you know, and if we're going to talk about today, my... Three kids ride to school every single day, in the winter, they walk to school everything, single day, and they go together, and that keeps them safe. And I think if we're asking families to split their kids between two schools, and we're promoting walking and riding, but we're taking their siblings away, you know, especially the older sibling if they're being sent to the other school, and in some neighborhoods, they're being sent farther from the school that they're at, I just think that's not promoting safety either. Safety in numbers and, and you're splitting siblings.
And I think the one, the other factor, you know, is we historically, you know, in our meetings have talked about the rise in first grade numbers that we see, and right now, grandfathering fifth graders and siblings, we've got class sizes of eighteen. And I think last year you had...
Nineteen new first graders.
Nineteen new first graders. So even if that number's not near the nineteen, because we're now offering full-day kindergarten, even if it's something as simple as, you know, twelve, you're looking at needing to add a section back. Same with the, the second grade numbers. So my fear is, and this was brought up before at the last redistricting meeting, is how, how close do we want to cut it to giving the extra classrooms in terms of, do we need to add them back in August?
Well, I look at both of those figures, and I see there's a huge possibility, just knowing what we've gone through the last two years, of adding another classroom no matter either one of those outcomes, because I feel like it's May, and these numbers were probably from April.
Right.
And Marie, and Marie both know that there's a lot of fluctua, a lot of diff, a huge difference between the numbers in June and the numbers in August. We've added classrooms the last two years, so, so I see that as a twenty-three. No matter what it, whichever, wherever it ends up, but I see that twenty-two as a twenty-three at Blueberry next year. And get jealous of that seventeen I see at Wolf Swamp that you sent me last week of their project. And the nineteen and a half at Center. So it still puts Blueberry with three classrooms, possibly, you know, three and a half classrooms, and, you know, not including preschool, six classrooms more than Wolf Swamp.
Michelle?
Um, you know, I've also offered the solution of the temporary walls that could create a division in the classroom. We've used them at Long Meadow, I know they're safe, I talked to the person, he's installed them in, in our buildings, they're, and, on top of the fact that the modular space could be an option if we wanted it to be for a conference space, but we have options. Those walls can be put in in less than a week. So if we have an issue because of, you know, learning space for pullouts with small classrooms, we can fix that if we have to, at a minimal cost.
Marie, can, I, I know, I know, you love the fact that I'm going to put you on the spot, but knowing what you know, and knowing your classroom sizes and spaces, do you see, can you honestly see that it would be the same number of classrooms whether we grandfather siblings or not?
I don't have the sibling chart in front of me, so it's, it's hard for me to look at the two charts. I, I think there's several, I think there's several things that you're going to be faced with. There are watch lists at all preschools. Um, you know, last year, we had a huge influx of people moving in, and within the last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of phone calls, I know, at Blueberry, I'm sure, probably at Center and at Wolf Swamp as well, of people coming to visit because they're planning on moving. So, you know, first grade's always, I, I don't have a, a big of a waiting list, as I've had the last three years, so I'm somewhat optimistic or hopeful that maybe that won't happen, but it's always on my radar. Um, you know, when families move in, typically first grade is an important grade, and that that's when they're, they're going to make that move. We do have currently at least four first grade new registrations. I know of a fifth that, I don't know if she's gotten her paperwork in, but, so I already know that there are five students already registered.
And that's in addition to these numbers from the twenty-eighth?
No, I included any registered, so definitely the four that I actually have, and the fifth one, when I talked to her last week, she's like, I'm trying to get that paperwork in. We try to encourage people to get their paperwork in so that we can have as much, you know, factual information as possible. So, so first grade is always, to me, if we, whether we redistrict or not, I think it's less if we redistrict just because we are moving approximately ten first graders. Second grade is another, you know, that's always been, and I guess I then look across the three schools, because I will say, and somebody said it earlier, you know, twenty-one, twenty-two in a class, I had that as a fourth grade teacher, you know, I had up to twenty-four, twenty-five, you've been great, somebody said it earlier. And so twenty-one in and of itself, to me, in second grade isn't bad, but if across the town, they're, they have less, that's, that's when I have a bigger issue, which happened several years ago, and I had twenty-three in first grade, and at Center and Wolf Swamp, they had sixteen. That's a huge discrepancy. And that's when I think, you know, we've been adding the sections at Blueberry, which we are very grateful that you've been adding to keep our numbers down as well.
So Marie, just so I, I make, I want to make sure I understand the numbers, because they say they're, they're up to date as of the twenty-eighth. So this number of having Blueberry with grandfathering fifth grade and siblings, having eighteen, three classes of eighteen, or are we talking about...
What grade are you talking, first grade?
First grade? Are we talking about adding five additional students onto that, or is that included?
No, four, as of the twenty-eighth, four of the students that were registered, that we actually had registrations are included in this number.
So you know of one more who's working on paperwork?
So right now, I know of actually one more, I have, because I have, so I checked today, the current, the projected four Blueberry without redistricting, because that's how Power School keeps it, there are sixty students projected for our first grade. When I take out the number of students who live in A, I have roughly about fifty-one. So I have one more than what is here on Blueberry's enrollment, I'm looking down at...
That's fifty-three on here.
Yeah.
With siblings, fifty...
Right, so...
Okay.
You were using the last...
Yeah.
...presentation.
Right, right, so I, I'm... We have the numbers today. I, I bid a projected enrollment that's in Power School today.
Okay.
And those are the numbers, so right now, in Power School today, they're not showing any redistricting because we haven't done that, I would have sixty first graders. And I have roughly about sixty.
Six-zero.
Six-zero.
Can you, do you have your whole list, all the grades?
I do.
Do you mind?
Nope. So today, when I checked Power School, I'm today, and the projected enrollment, so I have fifty-four kindergarten, sixty first graders, ninety-eight second graders, eighty-one third graders, ninety-six fourth graders, and eighty-three fifth graders.
These are next year's numbers.
Those are next year's numbers.
Without grandfathering anyone?
That's without grandfathering anybody, that's what's in our database as of right now. Now, I also know when I look at, so I have different numbers here, you know, looking at the numbers with grandfathering, I didn't do siblings, and then it's also some families I know that are moving, that, so they're still listed in those numbers, but we've confirmed that there are a few moves. So then I started subtracting numbers.
And I know of one family moving in that has a incoming fourth grader, and they're not sure which school they're going to be at, but I know the two houses they're looking at are either in Blueberry or Center, so, which is our watch grade for both schools.
Right.
Any further discussion? John's asked to move the question. Okay, so we need to vote on...
The amendment.
The amendment, which is not voting for the proposal, it's voting to accept the amendment that we will be voting, that that will be the final item that we are voting on. So, all those in favor of the amendment, which is moving students from Neighborhood A to Center School, including rising fifth grade students residing in Neighborhood A to remain at Blueberry, along with any member of their family to remain at Blueberry?
Or to have the option to stay or go?
That they will have the option, well, they, right now, they have the option.
I know they do, but I'd like to reiterate it.
So all those in favor?
We're just, we're changing the motion.
Yeah.
Right, we're voting to change the motion. So all those in favor of changing the motion, all those opposed?
Okay.
So the motion is not amended?
Tried.
So we are now on to voting on the motion as originally presented. Moving on the recommendation of the redistricting subcommittee, the school committee approved the proposal to redistrict elementary students in the neighborhood described as Neighborhood A to be zoned for Center School as of 2015-16. The proposal includes grandfathering rising fifth graders who currently reside in Neighborhood A to remain in Blueberry Hill for their final year of elementary school 2015-16. We're calling the vote, all those in favor, all those opposed, all those abstaining.
I'm voting with, I'm sorry, I didn't get my hand up at the last second.
Okay, so all in favor, and then all opposed, and no abstentions. All right, so that motion passes. And just as a reminder, for school committee members, per our operating norms that are posted on our website, that once the committee has taken action on a vote, committee members, it's recommended that we support the official position of the committee, respecting each other's opinions and not criticizing each other behind our backs or in appropriate, in otherwise inappropriate manners. So, just as a reminder from the MASC on our operating norms. We've already discussed textbook adoptions, so moving on to the approval of warrants.
So that these will be available?
Yes, you had said that those will be available for the review for the next two weeks in your office, and then we'll be voting.
Okay, just want to make sure you...
Yeah, I think you had said that earlier.
Okay. I move that the school committee approved the warrant batch number 2842 of the general fiscal year 2015 fund dated 15 May 2015 in the amount of $290,553.60.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I moved that the school committee approved the warrant batch number 2200 of the school lunch FY15 fund dated May 15, 2015, in the amount of $438.
The motion is...
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we also have a consent agenda for a field trip request.
Sure, I move on the recommendation of the superintendent, the school committee approved the consent agenda for the May 11, 2015 school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes, Katie?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the April 13, 2015 school committee meeting as presented.
The motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, and there's...
Oh, I'm sorry, I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the executive session of the April 13, 2015 school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Told me to make an amendment to the next motion.
And then, we do have an executive session planned for this meeting?
I move that the school committee adjourn it to executive session for the purposes of strategies relates to bargaining with units A, B, D, F, E, H, and for pending litigation to reconvene into open session.
Not, not to convene.
Oh.
Is there a reason we need to convene back into open?
Okay, and to not convene, not to reconvene into open session.
Okay, so I need a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, thank you very much, we appreciate you watching, we will be back here on Tuesday, May 26. Have a good night.